Call to order the full city council meeting for October 4th, 2022. The clerk will call the roll for attendance.
Anderson Burgos?
Here.
Bartley?
Here.
Givner? Jordan?
Here.
Maldonado Velez?
Presente.
McGee?
Here.
McGivern?
Here.
Murphy Ramboletti?
Here.
Huello?
Here.
Israel Rivera?
Here.
Tallman?
Here.
Bacon?
Here.
Please stand for pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God bless America.
And the city of Hoyok.
And the city council.
Before we get started, I'd ask that we have a moment of silence for Bernie Lavelle. He was the clerk of committees, also a teacher, just an outstanding family to the city of Hoyok. We just lost him recently. Also for a dear family friend of mine, Dorothy Tulpier. We might have remembered Alan Tulpier. She passed away yesterday. I'll miss you, Mom. I love you. Moment of silence, please.
Motion taken. I don't want to table and open up the public hearing.
Motion taken. Public hearing, all those in favor.
Aye.
All opposed. This is a petition for a poll for wire location for Gas Electric Department. Requested permission to locate wires, cables, poles, fixtures at Essex Street's alleyway between Beach Street and Oak Street. Motion B to allow the GNE to address the poll petition.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Is anyone here from the Gas Electric?
Yes, Finn O'Connell.
Oh, there you are.
I lied.
Hey, how are you, sir?
Good, how are you?
Good. Turn it over to you, ask to kind of tell us what's going on with the poll and everything else.
Okay. So, right now, what we have is a single poll that's going to be used as a structure for stability for upstream polls from where the new location will be. We're looking to install this poll in a tree belt area. It's off of Essex Street. It's an alleyway. It will be between 209 Essex and I believe the other address is 215 Essex and 209 East Street. We spoke with the butters and the adjacent butters, and they have been all in agreement with the new poll installation. The reason for the poll is actually we have a gentleman that lives at 203 that is handicapped in a wheelchair, and we have some equipment that is somewhat obstructing his backyard access to his gate. So, since these are all Verizon-owned polls, the best we could do is move some of our stuff. In order to do that, we had to install this new poll.
Any questions? Counselor Barley?
Well, thank you, Mr. President. I don't have a question, but Mr. President knows, and I think he shares my feelings about our friends at Verizon. So, we're grateful. We're grateful for the GNEs reaching out to the constituents and trying to find a reasonable solution. Thank you.
Anyone further? Counselor McGivern, you have, I thought you had a question. Okay. Motion B to close the public hearing. Oh, anyone from the public on this? Oh, Mr. Henry is online. Hold on. What's that? Spencer Fox Peterson online.
I'm sorry, I had my hand raised for the regular public comment. I do not have anything to add to this particular issue.
All right, thank you. Anyone else in the chamber?
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to that we close the public hearing.
Motion is to close the public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion-
And, Mr. President, I'll make a motion that we grant the petition.
Motion is to grant the petition. The clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for the poll location.
Jordan?
Kevin?
The poll.
Your first.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name was called, yes.
Maldonado Velez?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Ramboletti?
Yes.
Huello?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Tallman?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
And Ms. Hope.
Your vote approved that one. So, just as a reminder, Counselor Jordan will go first on votes. We also should make a motion to because we do have one counselor. Is she on? All right, so we're good for now. We don't need the motion because everyone's here at this time. So with that, Counselor Mala Velez.
Can I make a motion to take public comment out of order and put it before late on the table? The second?
All right, so motion is to go out of order to public comment. That was seconded. All those in favor?
Aye. Any discussion or?
Counselor McGivern.
What's the rules for public comment, Mr. President?
Public comment is, I have to actually go get the sheet. If you're not from Hoyok, we'll have to suspend the rules to allow everyone to speak. For those who are listed, whether it's in chamber or online, it's a minute and a half. And at one minute, I will kind of wave you and let you know.
The only suggestion I have is, and I enjoy public comments as much as anybody does, is we have committee reports, close to 130-something items this evening. And I think we have to stick fast by our amount of time for public comment, which is, if I remember correctly, 15 to 20 minutes to get it done.
Yeah, it's 10 people, or I believe it's 10 listed, unless we suspend the rules to open it up. We only have seven listed here, and I don't see so far online, I'm not sure, what? And three emails, so that would be our 10.
I suggest we don't read the emails. We all were given copies of them, that we just let the public speak who are here.
I second that.
All right, so motion is to, for public comment, submit the emails that we all received into receive them, and then open it up for those who are here to speak online as well as in the chamber. With that, going out of order with those, Counselor-
I just have a question, just for a point of clarification on that. So, if you're just receiving the public comment and it's not read into the minutes, then is it still a public comment? Or it's just an email that comes to us?
Great question. Seeing how we received it, and it's going to go into the minutes, it is received.
But it's not read- It would be read into the minutes.
You could read the three emails, but that could take up to 15 minutes easily.
No, I understand.
If it takes up to 15 minutes, now we don't know we have time to let the public speak.
I'm just trying to understand the clarification of what public comment is. That's all it is to me. What does public comment mean, and what is the definition of public comment?
So, what I can do is just-
That's all it is for me.
For clarity is, we can start reading them. I will put the timer on for the minute and a half, and if I'm not done finishing reading them within the minute and a half-
I just want to be fair. That's all it is.
If not, then we don't have to read them.
That's cool. But I just want to know what it means and make sure that we're transparent to the community overall. That's all it is to me.
Counselor Bacon.
Can we just hear from the people in the chambers first, please?
Oh, we are. And then Counselor Jordan.
Yep. Again, perhaps it was part of my hiatus away from the council, but previously, when we had adopted this rule, there were no emails at all. So, it was public comment. You come up, you say whatever you have to say, and that was the way it was for six years. I left and somehow secreted into this became reading emails.
Because of COVID. Because of COVID.
Fair enough. Fair enough. But I think we're at a point now that we're all here. If people would like to share emails, by all means, please email all of us, but, or include it in the record. But the thing that we have to sit here and start reading people's emails now at the meetings, that to me is a little much. And I think if you would like to be heard, by all means, you're welcome to get on the list. But if you would like to send us an email, by all means, I read all my correspondence as a general rule. So, but I don't think, I'm not a big fan of the whole, you know, we're going to sit here reading people's emails. I don't think it actually does justice to the people that come down to the meeting, to be honest with you either.
All right, so the motion is to go out of order to public comment based on what was suggested in a sense of a minute and a half per person, 10 people limited, seven are listed. I'm not sure who's online yet. We'll take them up. If that's the 10, then the emails would be received. So with that, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? First, for those who are here, I have a John Rivera, 125 Cabbage Street. When you come up, please say your full name, address, and then we'll get started. Once again, around the minute mark, I will kind of give you the heads up.
Sweet. And I was one of those persons that did, you know, send an email in. Just to clarify, you don't have to read that one out. You give me that head start.
Yeah, go ahead.
Good evening, City Council. My name is John J.R. Rivera. I reside in 125 Cabbage Street over in Ward 1, right across from the proposed Chestnut Shot Spotter implementation. I'm speaking today on behalf of two things, though. I'm in complete, the first one, I'm in complete opposition of the Shot Spotter technology being implemented as a Ward 1 resident. I would also like to add that I would not like to see ARPA funds being used on this. I'm under the impression that it's unfortunately legal. Legally, it does not bring in just morality. I'm urging city councilors to unfortunately vote yes, but speak in opposition to this detrimental waste of technology. I'm also speaking on the basis of the right to recall. I urge city councilors to implement the right to recall. In these past months, we've had a lack of representation in one of the wards, to which I won't call out. This cannot continue simply. In light of the events, it is your civic duty as city councilors, but also as constituents in the Commonwealth, to implement a recall for city officials that cannot commit to the responsibilities of these chambers if something occurs. Whether, regardless of the event, lack of representation amongst the community or founded corruption and conflictual interests. That'll be all. Thank you for your time, and have a good night.
Thank you. Next is Lori Solomon, 192 Walnut.
Lori Solomon, 192 Walnut. From the August 2021 executive summary of the city of Chicago's Office of the Inspector General report titled "The Chicago Police Department's Use of Shot Spotter Technology", quote, "The Office of the Inspector General concluded that its analysis of Chicago Police Department's responses to spot shot or alerts rarely produced documented evidence of gun-related crime, investigatory stop or recovery of a firearm. Additionally, the Inspector General identified evidence that the introduction of spot shot or technology in Chicago has changed the way that some CPD members perceived and interact with individuals present in areas where shot spot or alerts are frequent. I live close to the corner of Walnut and Appleton. It's a great neighborhood, and I have tremendous neighbors. I've never loved living anywhere more. Since buying my house, I have experienced a lot of gunshots and gun violence, including a bullet in my living room window. I called the police. They responded quickly and competently, and nothing about a shot spotter would have made that any better or any different." I would like to advocate that the department, the, sorry, I had to go off. That the public safety department be adequately funded to investigate the-
We are at our time.
Okay. And just incidentally, if some of the councilors would speak a little more quickly, we'd have more time for this.
Next is, it looks like Samuel Rivera, 226 Lyman Street?
Zenwo Rivera.
Ma'am, sorry about that.
Hello there.
The address is 226 Lyman Street?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
My name is Zenwo Rivera. I have lived on 226 Lyman Street and 378 Appleton Street for collectively my whole life. I've lived in the city. I wear this suit and tie because I refuse to be a product of my environment. Friends that I've met and I've lived with on that same block ended up en masse live, or ended up in the grave. Public schools, after-school programs have saved me from ending up being another statistic in the community that we live in. And on top of that, I don't think Shot Spotters is the answer to what you guys think is the solution. I believe that if we invest those funds into something more worthwhile, public safety departments, health departments, et cetera, it would save a lot of the youth from ending up becoming another statistic. I also wish to raise awareness. I have talked to many tenants along the 226, I mean, along the Lyman Street area, and I've heard nothing but awful conditions, holes in the walls, rats, mice-
One minute.
Roaches, mold, among other things, while, all the while, spending and wasting their money on expensive rent bills and stuff like that. And I just wish to raise awareness to everybody here that this is an issue that needs to be addressed. The Board of Health needs to get involved, and everybody in this council has to get involved with this. I yield.
Thank you. Next is Orlando Rivera.
Hi, Dylan. My name is Orlando Rivera. I live in 193 Chestnut Street. I'm a single father of two. I've been a resident of Hoyok almost four years now, going on five. Three of those years, I spent it in the shelters. And what I noticed growing, I grew up in New York City as well, so I know what it is to live in a neighborhood, drug-infested, full of crime. And what I noticed was that some of the places that distribute these drugs are still in the same place for four years straight. I've never seen a drug spot last that long in the same area, in the same building, for four years straight. Also, I think the funds should go to homelessness, more recovery centers, the youth, the schools. We need better communication, better relationship with the police. Police needs to start showing up to our elementary schools and not wait for something like Texas to happen. And start showing up. When they show up, the addicts say, you know what? I'm not going to shoot up drugs today in front of that school because the officers there saying hi to the children that are being taught that the police are bad. But if we break that stigma by having a relationship with the children and making them-
One minute.
-just as important. Kevin Ventilette was a homeless man. Okay? He got shot in the face, and he was a homeless man. Had there been a shelter for him, maybe he would have said, you know what? I'm going to call it a night, and I'm going to go to the shelter instead of going to the gas station where he got murdered. I hugged his mother in that same spot. And all these murders were drug-related. So, if we're going to do something, let's cut it from the root.
We're at the time.
And Hoyok kids matter, that's all I got.
Next is Kate Talbot, 87 Highland Ave. This is from Westfield, it says.
Yeah. Our rule suspended, so I can speak.
Suspend the rules.
I'll second the motion.
I want to suspend the rules to allow people from out of Hoyok. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay.
Awesome, thank you. Katie Talbot, 87 Highland in Westfield. I want to start by saying I believe Counselor Maldonado Velez. I believe him when he says his view and relationship with the police growing up felt similar to that of gangs. For us to think that the human beings behind the badge never use the badge to bully, intimidate, or harass the community is naive. This also brings me to the Shot Spotters. One of the reasons called for these Shot Spotters is because people don't call the police when they hear guns. Maybe if the, maybe if the relationship between the police and the community were better, that wouldn't be the case. If we acknowledge the areas we can do better and start having conversations about the trauma imposed by the HPD, then those relationships would improve. And that's a free option. We want to expand the public safety budget to $500,000 a year. That department, fully funded, could research community response models that would work to actually address the root problems that create increased gun violence. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Maribel Ortiz.
Yes, Maribel Ortiz, and I live at 101 San Colby Drive. I agree to the technology because I have like two incidents in my life living here in Hoyok. I've been living in Hoyok for 26 years, 10 years in downtown. One of them is I went to Willian Auto Sales to see a car with my husband, and we was looking at the car, and two cars, they started like shooting to each other. I was so scared, of course. I was hiding. I never called the police. The second time, I was in my house, I was with my kids, I was living in Beach Street at that time, and it was a shooting in front of the house, and I have to like, you know, put my childrens on the floor because this happened. I think most of the time, we don't call the police. I hear shoots, shooting all the time here, and I don't call the police because I don't know where they come from. I think if we have the technology like that, they can at least address where they come from. And I think we can invest money in other stuff, but if there is only a grant that is going to be for two years, why don't try? That's the only thing that I have to say.
Thank you. Next is Paulo Fiaro, 180 Michigan Ave.
Good evening, all. Paula Ferbadio, 180 Michigan Avenue. And I'm here tonight as the Chair of the Historical Commission. I wanted to come to reinforce the letter that the commission sent, and thank you all personally for having voted eight votes towards a preservation ordinance. I'm also here to plead with President McGee, who is a world counselor for one of the most beautiful and historic neighborhoods in the city, to maybe reconsider his vote tonight. And same for Counselor Tessa Murphy Ramboletti, who also lives in Ward 7 and is a counselor at large, but a great sports of business in the city. And so much has changed since the preservation ordinance came just two months ago. Now, we have dealership, motorcycle dealership coming into historic churches and a huge interest in high street. So, I hope that you can all pull it together tonight and pass this ordinance that will be very good for the city. Thank you so much. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Anyone online? So there are five hands up online. What was it? Meg Bassan, if I'm saying that right?
You are. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I am a Pittsfield resident. I don't know if you've continued to suspend the rules or you have to do it every time.
No, no, you're, it's open.
Okay, great, thank you. My name is Meg Bassan. I represent a group called Invest in Pittsfield, which is a citizen organization that looks at our city's budget and how to most effectively invest that money for a just, safe, and thriving Pittsfield. Pittsfield has had Shot Spotters since 2016, and I wanted to share our city's experience with you so that you understand what's coming down the pike, literally, at you. This also began with promised private and grant funding in our city that ran out. We are now on the hook for $240,000 a year for our Shot Spotter subscription and have been for the past five years. We also had to seek a grant in our city for $233,000 because Shot Spotter causing monitor pop-ups that disrupted the dispatch system's ability to function. So, we have spent over $1 million plus $233,000 in grants. We also have data collected by one of our former city councilors that shows that in Pittsfield, Shot Spotter has a 70% false positive rate, that 70% of the time, it is not a gunshot. And the bulk of the time-
One minute, one minute.
-confirmed valid, that those are also being called in by citizens. Only 7% of the time is it a confirmed positive gunshot that was not called in by citizens. 7% of the time over the four and a half years that we have data for. Your city is about to waste a tremendous amount of money on this technology, and I urge you to stop it in whatever way you can.
Excuse me. Spencer Fox Peterson.
Apparently.
Good evening, Hoyok. My name is Spencer Fox Peterson. I am living over in Ward 6, 51 Portland Street. I am also in opposition to Shot Spotter. I've sent the whole council many emails regarding this and other police issues. I agree with everything everybody else has said. I co-sign everything. I do want to address some things that I'm noticing right now. It's ableist to say people, ableist and classist to mention about showing up to public comment in person. This still takes time out of our day. Some of us work until 7:00.
Good evening. Someone speaking, thank you.
Some of us work till 7:30. Some of us work till 8:00. So, the best we can do is go online. Some of us are, have issues that we can't leave the house. So emailing is an appropriate public comment. It's very ableist and classist. We also have a First Amendment issue in this city. We have the police department coming at Counselor Jose Maldonado Velez, referring to him as a gang, and asking him to step down. Ironically, asking for this fealty to curb one's First Amendment from the police is what a gang would do. Now, there is court case precedent in the Sixth Circuit Court of Appeals saying that officers are held to a higher standard when dealing with public criticism. So to ask a counselor to recuse is a problem. This police department has an issue.
We're at one minute.
Anyways, this issue is an ongoing issue.
Let the dog should get an extra minute.
And the police do not actually do anything to keep us safe. It's not what they do. Thank you for your time. Have a good evening.
Next is Jose what? Adostra.
I'm actually right here.
Oh, he's right here.
Jose Adostra from 139 Hillside. I would, I'm begging you guys, I'm a father of three, and like, I've been trying to come here periodically. I haven't been here recently, but like, please don't waste more of our money so that we can be over police more. Shot Spotter is more likely to get my kid's father murdered than their murderer caught. Eighty percent of it is a misfire. So, we're more likely to be harassed walking around our own neighborhoods than they are to catch a killer. Police solve less than 2% of crimes, so let's not get carried away with how effective they are and keep wasting our money on it. I urge you to invest in recovery and peer support in a community care department and to get more shelter options available, more food assistance, and more cash assistance because people have been selling drugs. I grew up on 245. I live on 139 now. I grew up in the flats and then in Jarvis. They're always going to come back. You think you're going to catch a couple really violent criminals? It doesn't matter because everyone is poor, and people are going to go right back into the same system. You need to create substance abuse recovery options, shelters. Stop glamorizing the police. They assaulted a minor and concussed him, and they offered his family a pathetic settlement, and that works for poor people to silence them? They have brutalized a 90-year-old girl. They operate their vehicles drunk. They can't even get along with each other. They can't even keep track of their firearms. The DOJ should be investigating Hoyok right after Springfield.
We are at our time.
I'm sure it will be worse than Springfield. So please stop wasting our money and telling my kids that you're making us safer because that's bullshit.
No, we can't say that here. Got to have some order here. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if you violate the rules and you speak at every other meeting, is there, we're going to have to discuss that too. Because we do have rules and decorum and-
We're not going to allow that type of language. So, who's next online? Joanna May Booty.
Booty, that's correct.
Oh, okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I reside in Montague. I'm originally from Pittsfield and frequent Hoyok often. I would like to thank all of you for your time. I would like to echo a lot of the things said by the community members here tonight. The person that last spoke said things very eloquently, in my opinion, despite us not liking his decorum at the end. I feel like civility politics is another way for us to police people, especially people of color. We should think on that. Please listen to your friends in Pittsfield, who've already given you a bunch of data. Out of Chicago, it was talked about as well. Shot Spotter is a faulty, useless technology. The city of Hoyok has other problems where the money could be invested. Please listen to neighbor-to-neighbor's requests and fund public safety instead. After these two years, if you really have to go forward with it, do not keep moving forward and just drowning Hoyok in more policing and losing money for people where you could put it in harm reduction. I yield.
And Victor M.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yep. Victor, full name and address, please.
Victor Machado from 40 South Austin Street. And thank you for this opportunity. So- So we like to support this ordinance about the shooting sporting because Holyoke is the most dangerous city in all Massachusetts. So we have a lot of drug dealers. We have a lot of things happening in the streets and so we need to take care about our citizens well. So I think that we can move forward with this initially. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? And that is it. That would take us past our 10.
All right. There were- In the spirit of public comment, Mr. President, I think I'll suspend the rules to make a motion to take off and to go out of order and take it off the table right now since this is the item-
Before we get to that, just real quick-
Yes, if there's another end.
John Rivera, 125 Cabot Street. That was the person that came in.
Yep.
Bridget Kearney of 51 Portland Street in Owen Broadworth of 1329 North Hampton Street, sent in the communications that you all had. Just want to put that into the record.
Great.
That exceeded the 10 because that was, I think we had 14 total. So that's the end of public comment. Off to motion, Counselor Jordan.
Yes, I'd like to suspend the rules to go ahead to item three, which I believe is the ShotSpotter item that's laid on the ta, oh, did we have one more person that had signed up?
Do you mind? I mean, I didn't get on anything that I was supposed to get on. I don't think I-
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
This nice lady to speak.
Second, yeah. All's in favor? All's opposed? Name and address, please.
Okay, so my name is-
Up to the mic though, please, just so you-
Make sure it's on, please.
My name is Beth. I got to put my glasses on.
I'm sorry.
Gatzounis Gonzer. I have resided in Holyoke all my life, which is 68 years.
Beth, just give us your address, Beth.
Oh, 236 Michigan Ave.
Yep.
So I grew up in Ward Two, now I reside in Ward Three. Phew, okay. I am here regarding the comment over police as gang members. The comment was very troubling and upsetting to me. So my husband, James Gatzounis, his name is on that monument in front of the Holyoke Police Department, along with my brother-in-law, John DeNapoli. Both grew up in Ward One and are not gang, they weren't gang members. They were people just you and I, like you and I, wanted to serve the residents of our city. Again, I will say, they were not gang members. I am well aware there are some not-so-good people in all professions. And with that being said, we need to support the majority and give them the tools they I would hope that they do do ShotSpotters because I just feel like that would also help whoever got shot too, to be honest with you. In the end, I will say, the Holyoke Police Department, they are not gang members. They all try to do their job, just like we all try to do our job. Maybe it's not perfect.
One minute.
Okay.
No, no, you can keep going. I'm just, I just-
I'm good. I said all I had to say, but they are good people and they don't deserve what they're
So Counselor Jordan, you had a motion.
Yes, Mr. President, I would like to suspend the rules to go out of order to item three, which is the matter at hand of ShotSpotter and to remove it from the table.
Second.
Motion to suspend rules, go out of order to number three. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Item three, which was laid on the table, it's at the City Council here, I accept the provisions of the fiscal 2019 Safe Neighborhood Program. Grant, no match for $64,850. With that, motion would be to receive, adopt-
Pass the first.
Pass the second reading.
Mr. President-
Hold on, hold on. So that's where we are. Counselor-
Mr. President-
Burgos. Counselor Anderson Burgos has a question or a comment.
So on, I just want to, I want to put a few things for the record. So on September 1st, when I was home battling COVID, here are some reasons why I voted no on ShotSpotter. I read the reports I found online. I knew about Pittsfield, Fall River, and then Springfield's comments about having issues for two years. I also had an issue with a for-profit company taking advantage of state grant funds. Now, since then, a lot has happened. I have been called a racist, that I hate cops, and that I love criminals. In an email, I was told, "Go F yourself, Reekan." And there's more. Here's another email. Here's your pronouns. Spic. Pork chop. Welfare monger. What's the most confusing day in Holyoke? For Reekans. Father's Day. Longest bridge in Holyoke, or, sorry, longest bridge in the world. Fall Bridge, it connects Puerto Rico to South Hadley. See ya, Spic. So here's what I see. I've always supported cops and my brothers and sisters in this council know that because how I vote for cops, when it comes to budget, when it comes to communicating with them, constantly. My uncle, God rest his soul, was a respected officer. He was a sheriff of Seminole County in Florida, then became one of the top players, secure, private investigators in Florida. So I have a long history of friends and family in law enforcement. So for me to be told all of these things just because I did my research as an elected official, I did my research on the ShotSpotter. And I thought that what I was doing was the best for the city of Holyoke and that we can find a better solution. These are all the things that happened to me in between. So you can say, right, that the cops didn't like to be called gang. Would I refer to them as gang? No. That's not my experience with cops, but I can't say that that's not my colleagues' experience with officers. But so if, if, if the officers of the Holyoke Police Department believe that they were wrong, well, guess what? Two wrongs don't make a right. Why do other city councilors in this body have to be exposed and trashed and talked about with racist, disgusting comments? We were elected by the people to do what we believe is best for our community. So who are these people to come at us? This is disgusting, to say the least, that I spent countless of hours coming into this room trying to do what's best for the city and to be attacked like this is beyond belief. And guess what? When all of this came out, some of the city councilors, and I already expected, didn't come to my aid and say, "Oh my God, I'm so sorry that this was said to you. I'm so sorry." No, they jumped immediately, "Let's protect the cops." Not a word. It is disgusting, to say the least. And again, for the record, I respect and support the Holyoke Police Department, but two wrongs don't make a right.
Counselor McGivern.
Mr. President, just a little table setting. This item, I'll remind everybody, came out of the Committee on Finance. What is before us is the request to accept the grant for $64,850 from the Attorney General's And it is a grant that is earmarked for ShotSpotter and ShotSpotter only, cannot be used anywhere else. Mayor Garcia has proposed and has stated publicly more than once he is going forward with ShotSpotter. He will use ARPA monies for the two square miles if the grant is not accepted. By accepting the grant, we will be saving some ARPA monies that can be used in other areas that would be appropriate and allowed through the other formula. We, in the Finance Committee, first met with the police department and a representative of ShotSpotter and talked about the grant itself. We asked if there was going to be a presentation on ShotSpotter because city councilors had questions. Counselor Jordan appropriately asked that we have a full presentation before we made our recommendation. We tabled it for a second meeting after a half hour of discussion and met in the Committee on Finance prior to the special meeting earlier this month and talked about it for almost an hour and 45 minutes after a lengthy presentation put on by ShotSpotter and listening to others that were present for the purpose of the grant, but for the purpose of explaining ShotSpotter to us. We asked many questions, were given answers, and the opportunity was for, with all city councilors to do just that. And most every city councillor here took advantage of that and were present. The special meeting, when this came out of the Finance Committee, we spent two hours as a council talking about this. We, I think we turned over every stone, we talked about every fact after the committee reported its recommendation and we had a very, very lengthy discussion and debate over this. Most of it was about whether you believe in ShotSpotter or you don't. Voting for the grant or not voting for the grant is not going to stop ShotSpotter from coming into the city of Holyoke. It's going to save us some money. For those of us who believe in ShotSpotter, you know, it's much easier for us to vote for the grant. For councilors who don't believe in ShotSpotter, I realize it's difficult, but tonight, if there's nothing new to be said, unless someone is thinking of changing their vote or someone did not have the opportunity to talk at the last three meetings, I suggest we go to the second reading and take our final vote. The reason it's here and the reason it was tabled is Mass General Laws make it clear appropriations pass in the Commonwealth with a simple majority. Our charter, which connects us with, with Mass General Laws, has no, no issue but to abide by that with one exception. Our charter demands that we do not pass two readings on the same night unless we have a two-thirds majority. At that special meeting, a two-thirds majority is nine votes. At that special meeting, the vote was eight to four. We reconsidered it, we tabled it, it's just a routine type of procedure. Once we knew the two-thirds were not there, to take it up at the next meeting, which is tonight, it takes a simple majority to spot, to pass the appropriation itself. If we enter into any type of debate, I'm going to guess, we're all going to say what we said at the last meeting and we're going to spend the next two hours repeating ourselves. So I just ask that we go to the second reading.
I'll second that. So motions go to the second reading. Counselor Murphy Donboletti had a question.
I don't know if I had a question. Kind of had some, I mean, I'm gonna, I'm not going to repeat anything that I said at the last meeting, but to be honest, like, I, if there's councilors in this room that want to speak on their own behalf after, especially after the last meeting, which it's been over a month now, and a lot of really unproductive and hateful things have been said to some of our fellow councilors. And I actually think, like, if they want to be able to say something about their own character, since it's being brought into question by plenty of people, including people in this room, I think they deserve that opportunity. I'll just say, like, I'm not changing my vote. I've talked to a lot of people about this. When I was running for office, I spoke often about how I disagreed with the way that the city council rejected the Barr Foundation grant. That grant was rejected because city councilors had feelings about it and I don't think that's our purpose as a city council. I think if a city department applies for a grant, our role is to approve or deny the grant. And it's not our purpose to block grant opportunities. It's not our purpose to micromanage, but it is our purpose to hold people accountable. That's why we're here. So I'll just reiterate that I've seen others before me vote against a grant opportunity and I didn't want to take that path. So that is simply why I'm not voting in favor of this, or I am voting in favor of this, but I do think that everyone should and can keep their comments brief and, you know, if we're going to talk to the public about decorum, I think we need to look at ourselves. And really, I mean, that's all I have to say.
Counselor Jordan.
Yeah. I'll just talk about this piece of it, which is not directly germane to the topic, but goes to the bigger question. And Counselor Anderson Burgos is correct to point this out. I mean, there needs to be widely more civility in politics. I've, I've said for many years now, it's with the advent of social media and people can just get on there. I'm the victim of it, you know, frequently. I have people, as we talked about earlier this year, going around with anonymous hit pieces door-to-door about me. You guys are well aware of those.
I do.
And her. So believe me, I empathize with you completely and that is disgusting that anyone would dare say something like that because I know it's not true, besides all the other crazy hateful things that were said to you. But yes, we, we do need to have more decorum and that begins with every one of us. But the people that, you know, that's universal. We all have to be that change, right? And there's a lot of people contributing to it. It's, when it's people you like, I'm outraged. When it's people I don't like, radio silence, finger clicking, you know, whatever. People need to take it down a notch because we're all here to help the city and move us forward, all right? We may come to different conclusions, but we're all here with the purest of intentions, in my opinion, because you'd basically be crazy to come down and do this job in the first place if there, if you weren't civically minded because, as I've told people, it's the most glamorized, well-below-minimum-wage job you'll ever have is being a Holyoke City Councillor. So if you're doing this for the money and the glamour, you've come to the wrong place, okay? Because this is nothing but heartache and hard work. And so anyways, enough about that. Back to ShotSpotter, I will say briefly, I will take exception to one thing, Tess, it's on the merits, is this notion that the council, anytime a department gets a grant, we should just de facto approve it. I honestly respect the people. If you're against this, vote no. Now, I am obviously strongly in favor of it and I think you should, on the merits, support this, but I am not willing to acquiesce that point because there are periodically, it's not often, but there are periodically grants that I've seen come that some department head will come forward and say, "Hey, I went out and got this. Isn't this great?" And we'll be like, "Well, no, because we either got this match or there's this other impact or we don't want to go down that road." There's a reason the state law requires the elected leadership to approve that because we're elected by the people and I'm not willing to acquiesce this authority, you know, just out of hand to these department heads in that regard. We, sort of the buck does stop here as a check in the process. So I, I would say, as the service continues longer, you will see that from time to time there are things that don't deserve your vote, okay? Quite frankly, and you should vote them down if you think they're not good for the city. And I don't happen to think this is one and I think you and I are in agreement on that. But on the merits of ShotSpotter itself, I will say that briefly, to summarize, this, in my opinion, is something that is good technology in that it's better than the alternative. For example, if you go to the dentist office, right, the dentist looks in your mouth, looks at your teeth and says, "You might have a cavity, you know, but how about if we use this machine called an X-ray, okay? And I'm actually going to X-ray your teeth and because we have this modern technology and I'm going to know if you have a cavity, right?" So here, we now have a technology that doesn't call on us to actually just hope somebody calls in and they've had all the statistics, about only 20% of the people call in, okay? And you're counting on what you think somebody knows where that shot came from. That is, you can't possibly compare that to this where they've shown that they can pick up the signal from 25 feet from where the bullets came from, okay? It's got to be superior just from common- It's gotta be superior, just from common sense, to just sticking your ear out the window and hoping somebody calls it in. I mean, good God, it's the year 2022. Why are we afraid of science, and why are we afraid of technology, okay? No, that is not to say that, you know, we want the public surveilled and all this, but I know this, I can certainly say, I do want people shooting guns illegally in Holyoke surveilled, and ShotSpotter is an attempt to do that, right? It tells us where the shots came from. Don't we all, can't we, I think we all agree with the central premise, catch as many shooters as possible. I don't think, I think we're thirteen and oh on that, I hope, right? And do we also agree thirteen oh that we want to save as many people that have been shot by somebody? Absolutely, right? So if they can show that we can identify where the shooter is and where the victim is, people, what are we talking about here? This is better than hoping, like, you know, two cans on a string out a window, that you're going to be able to maybe identify where the shooter is, and hope and pray somebody calls it in. In Springfield, the sergeant came, and he said, we did an exercise in Springfield, we shot off a gun eighteen times, not once did it call in. We had a guy that they mentioned, who, if it wasn't for ShotSpotter, this guy crawled up on the victim, crawled up on the side of a house, we would have never got to this guy. Doesn't, what do you think his opinion of ShotSpotter is today? You know, we have the luxury, I'm sitting here in a rather nice suit, tie, praise God, I have never been shot, I'm not laying on the side of a house. What do you think that guy, how do you think that guy would vote on ShotSpotter down in Springfield? Do you think he thought it was worth sixty-four thousand dollars? I sure as hell think he does, and I sure as hell am not going to sit here and take away ShotSpotter to save somebody's life. Good grief. That, we're losing, it seems like there's an ideology, that's what the public elected to come on this body, God bless the public, they always, in the end, I think, get it right. But I also have, was also elected, and I will say, and I will stand here for common sense, and I will stand here, hopefully, for technology and for keeping people alive. And it seems so obvious, this is like a no-brainer to me, and by the way, not to totally see this through the political lens, but I will, since theoretically, we are a representative democracy, and we're supposed to be representing what the people want. Do you think the vast majority of Holyoke citizens are in favor of ShotSpotter, or do you think the overwhelming number of citizens are against ShotSpotter? Newsflash, haven't done a scientific poll wildly in favor, okay? I have heard from many, many people in the last month, they cannot understand how this council voted it down. The mayor hears that, okay? He says he's heard from almost unanimous support of the citizens to do this. So he goes out and says, City Council, you can take these people sixty-five thousand, I'm going to do it anyway. So to Commissioner McGivern's point, that's also a valid point. You can vote yes on this and raise your objection to ShotSpotter and say, you know, I myself am not in favor of this, they're going to do it anyways, why not take the free sixty-five thousand dollars? Because that's also a bad idea to turn away money from the U.S. Attorney's Office. Number one, that's almost a, you know, basically a huh to you, right? Because if, what's the probability we get another grant from the U.S. Attorney's Office when they gave you one and you turned it down? Think they're going to, more likely or less likely to give you another grant in the future? We need the U.S. Attorney's Office on the side of Holyoke, they, we didn't go to them, they came to us and identified us because of the high incidence of gunshots in this city, which are, by the way, staggering to me, the sheer number of incidents, and as a result, they identified us for this grant. So as a result, here we are, they've given us this grant, take their money. This is money now that we're going to have to use ARPA funds if we don't take the sixty-five thousand dollars, that we could go to, you fill in the blank, you get to have a say, all the thirteen of us, on what happens with the ARPA money, and we're going, in the process soon, on what those recommendations will be. But the pot is sixty-five thousand bigger if we approve this. So for all those reasons, I feel compelled to speak on my behalf of my constituents who are crystal clear to me that they overwhelmingly want this, and I will be voting yes. Thank you.
Commissioner Rivera for the first time.
That was intense. Yeah, I know, that's, the grandiosity just oozes.
All right, let's focus on.
And, so, for me, for me here, like.
Really?
For me, it's just, we're going to be tough on crime, right? There's irony in that here, right? There's irony in the chambers for being tough on crime, that's the first piece, right? Second piece is, there's a lot of research that has been put out to contradict the ShotSpotter research, but we're only basing our information on ShotSpotter research off of the person that is selling the product, at the end of the day, a publicly traded product that was earmarked specifically by the U.S. Government for only that specific use. We couldn't use the money to improve our technology system that we already have in place, the camera system, right? Only specifically for ShotSpotter. I wonder who's winning on that, right? Across the country board, stocks and all that stuff, I wonder who's winning on that. Then for me, it's like, the irony in not questioning ShotSpotter's research, but if we do outside research for the people that we bring in to help us with our accounting, we question them up and down, and they actually have more accolades than the ShotSpotter people do, but we don't question them to that extent. It's crazy to me how we pick and choose who we want to question and who we don't question. So when we bring in people that has to do with finance and things, and people do not agree, ultimately, we question them up and down, we grill them, but for ShotSpotter, a person, a company that is publicly traded, that is selling a product to us, we do not question them, and we take everything as gospel. Even though, there are, there is research, a variety of peer-reviewed articles, for those of you that have gone to college or are educated to that extent, we know what peer-reviewed articles are, right? We know what this research is, you know what it is a product of. It technically is students researching and getting the work done, not getting paid for it, right? Unless the school's getting paid for it, and that's a different issue, a different topic. The research that's coming out of ShotSpotter, someone is paying for that, and the narrative is coming to you straight from them. So ultimately, when it comes down to it, when you hear Pittsfield, and you hear Chicago, you hear New Bedford, where the guy from ShotSpotter came out of, quote-unquote, they totally discontinued the process, or don't agree with the process, they say it's too expensive. Even Springfield, if you go back and listen to the officer, and you listen to him clearly, he does not wholeheartedly believe in ShotSpotter, the company. He believes in the ideology and the concept, yes, but he does not believe in the company themselves. He said it himself, it took them a while to get to the point to where they're at. He also said that when they went out there doing shootings and the practicing, it was to recalibrate the system themselves, not because ShotSpotter was coming out to recalibrate it themselves. So this is a whole nother thing that we have to take on and understand, and we're doing this for two years to get research in two years. Well, just so you know, in real evaluation studies, two years is not enough time to do real research, especially when it takes you a year and a half to come up with the system and implement it. So we will be having it for like five, six, seven, or until our police believes it's no longer adequate enough and we need another technology system, because we had the camera system put in place back in two thousand and three, and supposedly, it was supposed to have all this technology already instilled within it. What's happened to it? I do not, I do not know, ultimately. Now, the last big thing about my character, right? I am a dad, I go to school full-time, no part-time, I work full-time. Like Kevin said, this is technically a voluntary job, we get paid less than minimum wage. I get more stress from this than I've ever gotten in my life, even more than when I was incarcerated, I'm not going to lie to you, a hundred and ten percent. I got grades coming out of my chin left and right. I got people that were my friends that are looking at me differently now because of ways that I've voted, and you know what? I apologize, but that's where I stand. I cannot, I cannot go back on where I stand. I got to stand on my own two feet, and what I believe in is what I believe in, the people following me in, knowing who I was and what my background was, it's not about ideology, it's about that the people are tired of the same shit, man.
Uh, careful.
Hey, again, we're going back to civility, right? And who it oppresses and who it doesn't oppress. That does oppress me. Feel how you want to feel, it is what it is, we're speaking real talk right now.
No, no, order, we're not going to swear.
Mr. President, do we, I mean, this isn't supposed to be the Dr. Phil Show or some bar room.
You just talked for like forty-five minutes, bro.
No, but I'm not swearing.
Or your voice, you're not my dad, or your voice, you're not my father.
I want to call the gentleman.
Or your voice.
Not talk to me like. He needs to stop.
Hold your voice down, please.
He needs to stop insulting people, and he needs to stop swearing like that.
I said.
Maybe that's okay at the jail, but I'm saying.
Okay, enough, enough.
You know what I'm saying? You know what I'm saying?
Order. Order.
Whoa, Kevin.
Commissioner Jordan.
See what I'm saying?
Kevin.
Commissioner Rivera has the floor.
Wow.
Let me be, let me be clear.
It's okay, guys, this has been the story of my life in Holyoke, and we work on it, and I come up and I rise, and I still win. I still win, it's all right.
You have the floor, please. Everyone in the chamber, please.
As I was saying.
Commissioner Rivera has the floor.
As I was saying.
However, please.
I will refrain from using vulgar language, because we need to speak properly in council train versions. Okay, I'm getting back to what I was saying, right? With regards to my character, a hundred and ten percent, I am a Holyoker from the beginning until the end. You can feel however you want about me, but when it comes down to it, for me, it's about the best for my people. I do not have to be, I have two babies at home, that my wife is raising them by herself, more or less, because I'm here more than I'm home. So at the end of the day, I'm here for my people, and I will continue to do that, just like a lot of you guys have done for twenty, twenty-five, thirty years, as long as the people allow me to do it. I apologize again for those that don't agree with me, you can set up a time to meet with me and talk to me, I am open ears, and whatever you want to call it, everyone has my personal phone number, you don't got a Google number, you don't got none of that, you got personal stuff from me, it's real, a hundred and ten percent, I don't fake, I don't do none of that stuff. That's it, man, I'm done.
Commissioner Jenny Rivera, please, members, Commissioner Jenny Rivera.
So I just, I'm still going to stay with my vote, no. One is because I've also been getting all those hate emails, do I care? Not. Don't bother me. However, when I pulled papers, I was going to represent Ward One, I was going to represent my residents. I'm not going to sit here in chambers and be a yes person and just vote yes, because everybody wants that. I did my research, I might be new to the council here, I have a nephew in Chicopee that's a cop, I have a retired family member that was in FBI narcotics, I've had a bunch of Holyoke cops that are my friends, I graduated with them, they're my friends, they play softball with my husband, so I am not against cops at all. I did my research, I've talked to cops in Holyoke, Springfield, I have cops in Florida that I know, everybody's telling me the same thing I've heard, it's not effective, so I'm not going to change my vote, my vote is no. I am not afraid to go in Ward One, Two, Three, Four, Five, Six, I'm not afraid to go to any wards. I walk the streets, I'm not scared, I'm not scared to go any, every time there's a tragedy, a fire, whatever, even before I built a city council member, I jumped on board and I helped, I helped. I don't need a suit, I don't need a dress, I don't need to be fancy, I don't need to be on the news, I need to be there for my residents, which is why I decided to pull papers. So they could keep sending me all the hate mails, because unless you could say it to my face, it doesn't bother me, because the majority of those emails, they're not even in the wards that's going to get the spot shotter. So right now, their opinions are irrelevant to me. Thank you.
Commissioner Malina Alvelez.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I am going to try to keep it short and sweet, because I believe Commissioner McGivern is right, I don't think our votes are really going to change tonight, but there are some things that I wanted to address. First of all, I think it was, who was it, Jane, someone that spoke earlier, Joanna, around language, the word shit, the word fuck.
Uh-uh, please, don't.
It is not in our city council rules that those words cannot be said, and the reason why I want to say that is because when there, if those words are not being used against somebody, an individual should have the right to speak their language, and sometimes those words are sometimes the only way, the only words that someone can use to express themselves or emotions. Now, when you use that against someone, if I'm calling someone a certain profanity, a council member, then yes, I think that is disrespectful and that is carried away, but in referring to a certain issue, and that's the language that comes to mind, that's fine, that's fine. There were other comments, though, very disrespectful comments that followed that, that that should be addressed. As far as the ShotSpotter, same with both Consuleros, Commissioner Izzy, Consulor Jenny Rivera, still going to vote no. We've had five members of our, five people, five members of the public, five people that live in the neighborhoods that we're talking about, say that they don't want the ShotSpotter system. There's data, Fall River, of Pittsfield, Chicago, we keep saying, even in Springfield, we say that the sergeant is saying that it works, but then I'm in conversation with members of the community, they're saying, it still takes forty-five minutes for cops to show up to our community when there's a shooting. So like, those are the voices, while hearing different things, so I'm not here to tell you that you're lying or anything, but just, my vote is coming from the things that I'm hearing as well, because we all got elected, and we all got elected to represent the voices of the people, whatever those voices may be coming to us. The most precious resource we have, we're talking a lot about money and stuff, if anything I noticed from the pandemic is money will come. If we really want something as a body, as a city, the money will come and we'll make it happen. What we don't have is time. Time is the most precious resource, and I believe this would be a waste of time. The police are, they just asked for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in overtime in the last meeting, which was approved, they're not, they don't have the time nor the capacity to start with this technology at this moment. Now, there are other orders, I will address the other comments, because there is the letter from the chief as item twenty-two, and there are orders that I put in as a possible solution, but right now, with this order ShotSpotter, I'm sticking with my no, because I don't think it is the great thing to do at this moment. Thank you.
Commissioner Anderson Burgos.
So, when I spoke last, I was very passionate, and it's because that's who I am. So I failed to mention that I will be changing my vote to a yes, and I want to be clear, I've been born and raised in this city, fifty-two years, I ain't scared of people who are racist. So your emails and anything like that, it's not going to change my mind, and it's not changing my mind about whether or not, if I'm even confident that ShotSpotter would even work. I'm hoping that it would prove me wrong, but I highly doubt it. I am simply changing my vote, because I refuse to allow our mayor to use ARPA funds to pay for a technology that I do not have confidence in. So that's, I just wanted to state that for the record, thank you.
All right, anyone further? Commissioner McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just real quick, the comments tonight, and I understand the importance of Commissioner Murphy Rambeletti, what she said, and the importance of what we heard, there is no room for hate, there's no room for negativity, there's no room for any type of racist comments or comments, you know, for someone who is upset about any of our councillors who are voting the way they see fit. I respect everybody's vote, I don't have a problem with that, never had a problem with that. What I don't respect, though, is to twist the comments that are coming out of reports of councillors, and don't, you know, if you're against something, state it, but don't say the numbers that I heard and the numbers that I have presented to this council are wrong. We didn't just listen to ShotSpotter, we listened and heard and saw reports from a hundred and thirty-five cities, accuracy rates that are very high, but that's not even why I'm voting for it, and to be. But that's not even why I'm voting for it, in the beginning, I was skeptical. The reason I'm voting for it is it does two things, it's a tool. It doesn't end violence, it doesn't necessarily gonna, i- it's gonna give the police officers who respond to gunshots. And I have heard one person this evening say they're in favor of guns being shot in city limits. That's the worst crime we have. There's no need to shoot a gun in city limits. We don't hunt in this city, we don't have any hunting grounds. We don't, target practice is the revolver club, that's it. Target practice for police officers, they have their own indoor target ranges. There is no shooting allowed for a good reason. The tool lets the police officer know how many shots were fired and before a phone call, if a phone call comes in from a resident, where those shots were fired. Get onto Google Technology and understand the topography of that neighborhood, buildings, bridges, whatever, vacant lots before they come in. And that brings safety to the person who's responding to a shot fired and safety to the person in the neighborhood who is scared. My sister is a teacher and she told me her mother's comments three times last year. Could not bring her two young daughters to school cuz she was afraid to open her front door because there was no response to guns fired. The teachers at Lawrence School met with the police officers and the police officers heard and earful because of what wasn't happening. This is a tool. A tool that could save a life, a tool that could protect the life, whether they're wearing a uniform or whether they're the mother of small children locked behind closed doors. That's my vote, is to give public safety to the people who need it, the people I represent and the people I believe in. Both the police officer and the people they are trying to protect.
Counselor Maldonado Velez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, so this past week, um, a group of us had a meeting and the chief was in there. And one of the concerns and one of the questions was, are police actually gonna show up? This narrative that people in the committee are not calling the police, maybe not as much as they can, but people are calling the police. There was a same individual that spoke of, of Four Shot Spotter, mentioned that, that she saw shootings in front of her house and she called the police three times and they still waited an hour to show up. I don't see how that would be any different with this tool when literally the tool itself is not showing up to do the, the police work, the police work is not being done. So that's, the calls are being made and police are not showing up. Yeah, people are gonna get tired of calling at some point cuz they're, they're gonna feel like, yeah, they're not good, they don't have the good people, the capacity to show up or they don't care. I don't know if this tool is gonna change that. I don't know if this is actually gonna get the police there quicker and not only that, is it actually gonna make the people safe? That's why my, my no is coming from.
Anyone further? Alright, just, just quickly. Rule four, the president shall preserve order and decorum. They may speak to points of order in preference to other members. Rule nineteen, no person shall be interrupted while speaking but by call of order. All you have before you is a request for money in order to accept the grant or not accept it. The grant is for a tool, whether you like the tool or not. You vote yes for the tool, you vote no for the tool. There have been points throughout tonight where we talked about why the tool is good or the tool is bad. And then it got sidetracked and we started going out of order, out of decorum. There's no need for it. When I was appointed to this position by you, I specifically said, you vote up and down. Whether you like what Counselor McGivern or someone else has said, when you walk out the door in front of you, the gate, it's over. The words we use in this chamber have an impact throughout the entire community. So we have to be very careful about what we say because it does cause harm. The men and women of the police department do a phenomenal job. I don't think the words were meant the way they were, but they were perceived in a different fashion. Once again, we have to be careful about what we say and what we do. Talk about the issues at hand, it's a grant. Vote it up or down. Do not pick on each other, do not swear in here, that's not what we do, we are professionals. We were designed to do a job here, to do a job here, to take care of the residents of the city of Hoyok. Whether you disagree with anything that we vote up or down, that is it, you move on from that vote. I spoke with the mayor on this issue and I can be clear and, and side with him on this, this is one issue. That has taken us off the track of, if you look at all the positive things we have done. Look at all the things we have done leading up to this moment for the city. It was going at a good pace. People were starting to say, White Hut's coming, the new Indian motorcycle, but a lot of things are happening in a positive fashion for the city of Hoyok. That's what we should be promoting, the positive. This is a tool. You wanna hear some other tools on my tenure here? Cameras, they were mentioned, cameras, whether or not they work or not. Uh, ticket pins, you can go up and down the street and give a ticket, but the pin, those don't work, those are gone. Tasers, a lot of debates on whether tasers are good or not. About segways, remember those? Remember that was driven right into here, into the chamber, the segue? And they got stolen. So look at.
Somebody liked them.
Look at, there, there are a lot of tools out there. We try them. Pros and cons to all the tools that we're trying. Please, don't beat up on each other because of a tool. Whether or not you like it, that, that's fine. Our job is to respect each other. That's the main thing. Let's not forget that and I do want to, it's gonna be for my, uh, president report, but, you know, department heads as well. Certain emails have gone out over a period of time. And the tone of them are not acceptable, whether it's from us or from department heads towards us. We have to work together in order to keep the positive momentum of the city of Hoyok. That's what we have to do. So I just remind people of that. With that, motion would be to pass the second reading. Is that what's on the Counselor McGivern?
Yes, yes.
The clerk will call the roll. Vote yes, you're voting for the grant, if you vote no, you're voting against it.
Jordan.
Yes.
Maldonado Velez.
No.
McGee.
Yes.
McGivern.
Yes.
Murphy Rumbelletti.
Yes.
Poello.
Yes.
Israel Rivera.
No.
Jenny Rivera.
No.
Tommen.
Yes.
Bacon.
Yes.
Anderson Burgos.
Yes.
Bartley.
Yes.
Nine yeas, three knees.
Your vote, you approve the grant. Go back to item two, that was laid on the table, is there a motion for that one?
Um, Mr. President, we would need to take up item thirty-eight A to go with that if we want to move on that tonight. So I would suggest we take thirty-eight A up with item two and address thirty-eight A first.
Okay, so the motion suspended rules take up two with thirty-eight A, correct? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thirty-eight A, the committee on ordinance was referred, that ordinance be created to allow the fire chief contract and that this ordinance be established, the salary range, uh, for the mid, mid, mid and max. Have considered the same, uh, as amended and include language, any contract awarded on this ordinance is subject to appropriation by the council. Item two is the committee on finances was referred in order from, uh, Lisa Ball, acting city solicitor. A letter regarding the fire chief's contract recommended orders, uh, pending passage of the budget. Uh, Counselor Bacon.
Um, so the motion is to adopt the order and pass the first reading.
Motion is adopt the order, pass the first reading under discussion.
Um, I would note that we do have legal form, it has been amended as included in the order. And, um, also of note, it, due to research going back quite some number of years, that this position is a civil service position and is also so noted in the legal form. Thank you.
Any questions?
I just wanted to say.
Counselor Jordan.
Yes, I just wanted to thank Kathy Dignan in the law department for doing a really good job on, uh, many iterations of this and she really had to do some research to put this together for us, so wanted to say thank you to Kathy.
Thank you, Counselor.
Anyone further, so motion is to pass the.
First reading.
First reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion is to pass the second reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion that the passage be.
Motion that the passage be ordained, the clerk will call roll, if you vote yes, you're voting for thirty-eight A.
Jordan.
Yes.
Maldonado Velez.
Yes.
McGee.
Yes.
McGivern.
Yes.
Murphy Rumbelletti.
Yes.
Poello.
Yes.
Israel Rivera.
Yes.
Jenny Rivera.
Yes.
Tommen.
Yes.
Bacon.
Yes.
Anderson Burgos.
Yes.
Bartley.
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Your vote, you approve that. Item four, any action on that one?
We're waiting for the state on that.
Alright, so item five.
Question, do we have to take a vote to adopt item two?
Well, we took up two and thirty-eight A as a package.
Oh, okay.
So approve them together, do you wanna?
You can, but don't you have to do first reading, second reading on a financial, on the contract or we don't need that for the?
Well, you're, this was more of just approving the.
It's just received?
I think it's just received because you're passing the ordinance to then allow the funding, which the funding was already there in the budget. Kinda, it's kinda backwards, that's why. Alright, Joe.
No, I, I, I agree with the president, but I respectfully disagree with the city's listener. Because passing the budget without an MOU or without a contract in front of us is against rules, against ordinances of, of the city. So we, we have another order coming up tonight that should resolve that and.
Okay.
Put it to rest for future years.
Okay, very good.
Do you wanna just say two, receive? Wanna do it that way?
Sure.
So for two, motion is that we receive it, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, just so we have it on the record. Four is still gonna lay on the table, five?
Motion to take up item five.
Motion is take item five off the table, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Um, so this, um, ordinance as revised has been before us and we have had communication from the historic commission and our mayor. And we tabled it to be able to reconsider it. Um, from my perspective, it was a compromise that came out of a lot of work in committee and people who were on the one side of the debate and on the other side of the debate came and met in the middle. And so we have an opportunity, I think, to do some modifications and with our historic commission representatives sitting at the table early on with our building and property group, I think, um, the need for a demo delay can be largely avoided. Um, but in the interest of preserving historic properties, um, I would encourage the council to support this revision. Uh, we are always able to come back to the table to revise again in the future if we find a problem with it. Um, but I think it was a good compromise, um, on the part of almost everyone involved. So, um, my motion would be to receive, adopt and pass the first reading.
Motion is receive, adopt, pass, first reading, under discussion, Counselor McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President, I'll be quick, um, to spare what I just said about the last order that we voted on. Um, I, I'm opposed the, uh, the demolition delay ordinance being, uh, modified, uh, under the, uh, not, not that I'm against saving historical buildings, but there's a component here of, of private property within the city and a, a component of developers and business owners that this is anti-development and anti-business and could delay to a point, some people who are willing to invest money within the city, blighted property, vacant property, to a point of over a year. And to me, that's not a compromise. The, the six-month demolition delay, the same debate took place some eighteen, twenty years ago. And we talked about the numbers because of the historic commission having a public hearing and I think it's a, I'm not even sure if it's governed, but I think we did put it in this ordinance. You know, that the public hearing needs to take place within ninety days. When you start adding everything up, you know, from when the, when the button is pushed and when you go around go, the next thing you know, you're delaying the development or of a property because the property cannot be demolished until something, uh, takes place in terms of, uh, a delay order, ordinance. You're delaying someone's money that they want to invest. Um, it, it doesn't make sense, you know, we, we should, and I agree with Counselor Bacon, we should be fighting to save historic pieces of property before they get to a point where they need to be demolished and, and that's one of the, the set drag drawbacks within the city. Because, and, and the pick and choose of which demolition delay ordinance, you know, is which property, piece of property is, uh, delayed and which is not, is very political. The old bud across the street here, there was never one word uttered about demolition delay and saving that building. An incredibly historic building from, from mill owners to, to, uh, uh, husbands who were cashing checks and, and, you know, after working in the mills for, for the entire week. You know, to the, the, the whole scene of, of the downtown residential, commercial, industrial district. And no one, no one once in, in the position to delay it uttered a word about delaying that. There are other historic buildings that have not been given the forethought. The, uh, the Essex Hotel, there's nothing talked about the Essex Hotel until it caved in on I Street, you know? So there, there's a lot of politics in, in the demolition delay, you know, just, it, it used correctly, I understand it. You know, I helped sponsor it and debated with, with Counselor Devane, Counselor Jordan in the, um, in favor of the original demolition delay and I still support that. But not, not this compromise, it, it takes it too long and we could jeopardize some good dollars being invested in the city.
Anyone further? Counselor Maldonado Velez.
Thank you, Mr. President, um, glad we reconsidered this cuz I'm definitely on, definitely in support of the changes and whatnot, um. You know, next year we're celebrating our hundred and fiftieth year, like, and this is our first planned industrialized city, like, we have a lot of a history. And I think as much as we can to protect that history, um, it's the best that we can do. I think when we have an extra year, there's, what is, appreciate about the historical commission is not like, okay, there's a delay, you can't turn it down. There's actually like, hey, what can we help with to get funding for this, what grants are available out there? So there's a lot of work that goes into it, it's not just, oh, you can't do it for the next six months. You know, there's a lot of conversation back and forth to try to maintain that historical perspective in these buildings. Um, so that's why I'm supportive of this, uh, economically like, and ecologically, it's good for having less buildings coming down and instead like fixing them and making sure that we have, I don't know, that historical component of what is Hoyok, when people come into Hoyok, this is it. Um, that's why I'm in support of it.
Counselor Jordan.
Um, as we consider when the original ordinance was passed, I believe it was in two thousand and we've seen how the historic commission has used it over those, those years. It's been used in a very Spartan and rare amount of times. Um, I don't have the exact count, um, but I know it's a very small number of times. The request here is to obviously change the name from demolition delay to focus it on historic preservation, which is truly the intent. It adds approximately three months in the process. They had asked for six months more, but we didn't go that far. The ordinance committee struck, I feel, a balance between the two, to the points that Counselor Maldonado Velez made and the counsel, the points that Counselor McGivern made. And came down at making sure, and by the way, I think we also cleaned up a portion of it, which is, it never said how long you had to actually get the hearing too. So we actually cleaned that up to cap that at ninety days. That actually could have been almost unlimited, right? There, as to the decision and the getting of, of the actual hearing and that whole process, we put some pretty, uh, specific parameters on that and allowed the, the nine months. So I think this is really a good compromise, um, I, I agree with the points that were made earlier. Um, we really do need to make a concerted effort when possible to appreciate the historic preservation of buildings in the city. Where buildings can be saved, we, and the, actually is an opportunity to come forward with either grant money or private capital to do those things. Then we should do that, that should be the default. Where buildings can be saved, we, and the, actually is an opportunity to come forward with either grant money or private capital to do those things, then we should do that. That should be the default position to preserve a historically significant building. And to order to be in this class of buildings, it has to be considered historically significant. So, therefore, since this is used very judiciously, and it's only really calibrating the process to have three months additional, but with a cap now on the hearing, I think this really strikes a balance to, to balance all of the interest of economic development and historic preservation, and which is our, in looking back through the lens of twenty-two years, I think we've accomplished that here, to the best of human ability.
Anyone, Counselor McGivern?
Real quick. The, the numbers say it all. Now, if someone came in and said, I want to tear down the church on Pleasant and, and Handen Street because it's now business highway and build a gas station, I think we'd all be in favor of a demolition delay for an historic purpose of open, open book, okay? But, when someone comes in and says, it's time to demolish this building because it's been ignored for decades after decades, the roof is no longer supporting it, it's caving in, there's structural problems, to, to take this historic building and put it back on the rolls would cost astronomical dollars, we take the better project that makes sense. The developer who has the money in hand says, I can do something good and something nice here. It's, it's, it's very simple. It's, it's, we have a six-month demolition delay with public hearings that precede it. That's nine months. Now, we're taking the six-months demolition delay, adding ninety and ninety, that's twelve months. Twelve months is too long.
Counselor Bacon?
I would simply note that simply by amending the ordinance to give more time in the cases where it might be needed, does not mean that in every instance, the commission would invoke the demo delay. Most of the time, when somebody has come in to demolish a building, there has been agreement that the building is too far gone and it can't be saved. Rarely has there been disagreement, and that is when the demo delay has been utilized, which in all the time that I've been on the council, which exceeds ten years, I think I'm aware of maybe twice. So, it's not something that is overused, and I don't believe that currently, perhaps in the past, the decisions were very politically motivated, but I think we have a completely different commission now, and from what I've seen, it's based pretty much on common sense and the good of the city, and I guess I feel pretty confident that we'll have a collaborative working relationship, and that the extended time would only be used to perhaps come in handy in the example that was put out, the theoretical of tearing down a church to put up a gas station. So, I would encourage support for this, I don't think harm will come from it. Thank you.
Anyone further? Counselor Rivera?
I guess I would add that the idea of Holyoke economically in the future is for it to become like a tourist community, right? I, I think that's the narrative that we're trying to paint and sell to people outside of the community. I think it would behoove us to, to try to keep our historic look as much as we can within the community, because what I've heard, especially working in my job, and my, my organization, the nonprofit I work for is based out of Boston, so most of the people that are my supervisors and boss, and bosses, they work in Boston. When they come to Holyoke, what they are, like, what they love is the infrastructure and the historic look of Holyoke. So, that alone is a touristic draw for Holyoke. I think that us voting in favor of this will kind of help, kind of push that narrative later on in the future, maybe not now, but five to ten years down the road, when everything is all said and done. That's all my two cents.
Anyone further? So, the motion is to receive, adopt, pass the first reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading?
Motion is to pass the second reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
And most, motion that the passage be ordained.
Motion that the passage be ordained, the clerk will call roll if you vote yes, you're voting for number five.
Jordan?
Yes.
Maldonado Velez?
Yes.
McGee?
No.
McGivern?
No.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
Yes.
Poello?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Tallman?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Ten yeas, two nays.
Your vote, you approve that one. Off to six.
Leave it on the table, please, it's partially completed and they're seeking monies.
Okay. Off to communications, seven is from the mayor's office, a letter of veto regarding the following. The unit residents are offering the opportunity to meet in the neighborhood for public office and public board meetings who are making decisions with little zero input, the city should not spend a cost for a new building, so.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Just make a motion, receive, and I'm gonna make a motion to override the mayor's veto.
The motion is to receive, and Counselor Bartley?
I don't have a second yet, so.
I'll have a, I'll second it.
Thank you.
The motion is to receive, and then there was something. Alright, so a motion is to override the veto, that was seconded, under discussion, Counselor Bartley?
Yeah, I, I think we had a law discussion about this, which the mayor participated exactly zero amount, and so now, because he says in his letter, I don't think however that we need to make it a law, therefore I am vetoing. But he goes on to say, city councilors, I encourage city councilors to help facilitate public dialogue with residents. So, I would say just through the chair to the mayor, you, you can't have it both ways. So, this is what we did, Mr. Mayor. We put it into ordinance because this was not happening. So, dear Mr. Mayor, the city councilors, through hours of meetings, of which you participated not a minute, put into ordinance to have public dialogue relative to major construction projects, and we did it, I think, with only one dissenting vote. But he goes on to say, city, I encourage city councilors to help facilitate public dialogue with residents. Well, well, that's what we just did. We just did that September first, and you veto it? So, I, I question, I question the argument, and then I question his alternative, which he offers none. So, consequently, I hope we can veto, I hope we can override it, thank you.
Counselor Bacon?
Thank you, Mr. President. I guess I'm not seeing disagreement in the veto. It appears that perhaps there is some perception about role and whether it is needed to be in law, or whether it's administrative in function. However, what I think it is, is a good government ordinance where we're ensuring transparency for our residents, particularly when we are going to be spending millions and millions of dollars. And we all understand the economic environment that we're in. So, to me, this was just a good government thing, I don't see it as being in conflict with anybody. So, that's where I'm coming from on it, thank you.
Counselor Rivera?
I guess, for me, I was never kind of for it, because in agreement with regard, with regards to what Josh, I probably may have voted yes on it once, because the people were belaboring the issue and continuing to push the issue, even though we've been arguing and saying, not arguing, but debating it and saying no, so eventually you get to a point where it's like, whatever, yeah, okay, when it gets to the larger committee, I'll vote no anyways. But, at the end of the day, where it comes down to it is, we are city councilors, and especially if you're a ward counselor, you're at liberty to host your own community meetings. That's technically what Josh is pretty much saying, or the mayor is pretty much saying in the, in his communication. You have the liberty to host your own community meetings and educate your ward on what's going on within the community. And plus, there's already a process in place for a lot of this stuff anyways. It usually goes out, like, to community meetings anyways. When we were gonna build the new schools, there was a bunch of community meetings. When we do anything with regards to any municipality stuff, usually there has to be a community meeting anyways. So, it's kind of like duplicating a service that's technically already in place, but the other piece is, as councilors, we have the liberty to do it ourselves. We can organize our own meetings, I don't understand why it has to be kind of obligated by law, but, alright, thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, so the motion is that we vote to override the veto, it was seconded, the clerk will call roll, if you vote yes, you're voting to override the veto.
Jordan?
Yes.
Maldonado Velez?
No.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
No.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
No.
Poello?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
No.
Jenny Rivera?
No.
Tallman?
No.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
No.
Bartley?
Yes.
Eight yeas, four nays.
Was it nine, eight, nine votes? Eight. Was it eight nays or eight yeas? I, I missed that.
It was, it was sustained, the veto was sustained.
Okay.
Right.
There you go.
Right, we needed nine.
We needed nine.
Yes.
Yep.
Off to item eight.
On item eight, I'd make a motion to take this item up and to, I'd make a motion to override the veto.
Motion is to take up item eight and receive it, then motion is to override the veto, that was seconded, under discussion, Counselor Jordan.
Yeah, I'm a little puzzled by this veto, I didn't, I gotta say, I didn't see this coming. This is probably the biggest innocuous thing that I actually had talked to him at length about, and at no time, and I've talked to him numerous times, since the, the August meeting when we adopted this, and never once did he mention it, and him and I speak rather frequently. Just to go back on what this is all about, folks, was, one, we filed an order to get our house in order relative to the tracking of vacation time, and that we would have an electronic system to do that, and the mayor did a nice job to get us a grant to go and, and put that into munis. And also compendium to that was that we were gonna create a rule that says you will track vacation time, that department heads will have an electronic system to track the time, and that it will be tracked centrally, so that management can know who has so much sick leave and how much vacation leave, you know, basically what every business in America does. Here, we currently operate on the honor system, so you hopefully track your own, and there is no central system to do that. And we said, we're gonna do two things. One, we determined there was a material weakness in the system. One, there was no rule that actually required this. We had suggested for years that it should be done, but it never actually happened. So, we said, we're gonna do two things. One, we're gonna fix the problem. Two, we're gonna create a rule that says fix the problem. So, we created an ordinance that says that you will centrally track your time, and you will create a system to do this. Now, we got a grant, and they're doing it. Listening to the veto here, he says, well, I'm vetoing this because I don't want to create a law that influences the day-to-day management decisions that are the responsibility of the mayor. Like, I've been super transparent about we were doing all this, and I was like chief sponsor of pushing to get this grant approved and this ordinance, no time did he ever speak against it. As a matter of fact, personnel came in and testified in favor of this ordinance. Kelly was very strongly to say, we should have this ordinance, she came to the ordinance committee, she came to the grant adoption of it as well. So, I'm a little surprised. It sounds like it's, I guess it's being perceived now as interfering with something, you know, like a, a power grab. It's not a power grab, it's saying that we have an, an obligation to be tracking vacation and other personal time off leave, and we need a system to do it, and we're creating a rule that says you will do it. Not in the past. In the past, it was, I guess, Wild Wild West, do whatever you want, and that's basically what they did, and some departments would do X, some departments would do Y, nobody really knew how much time we had. So, the city council has fixed that, and has a very simple half-a-page ordinance, I mean, create a system, use the system. And that's the, that's the order, and I would say, yes, we should do that. I'd love to hear an argument that we shouldn't do that, maybe there is one out there, but that, that is, that is the recommendation to override the veto. Thank you.
Counselor Anderson Burgos?
So, I don't, I don't think the mayor is particularly saying that it's an overreach or that it's a power grab or anything like that. I think what the mayor is trying to demonstrate is that he is capable of running the departments, and this, there's already something, he's already working on what, what your, what your order is asking, he's already working on it. So, it's like, he, he saw what you wrote, or he saw the order you, you produced, and is going to go by what you said, basically. So, he's actually doing it. I, I don't think it's a matter of like saying, you know, hey, I don't need you to power grab, I don't think it's that at all, I just think he wants to be responsible for running the, the tight ship that he does.
Cool.
Counselor Murphy Rumbelletti?
Thank you. I was actually gonna say something very similar, just reading the veto letter, I, I don't really see this as the mayor disagreeing with the intent of the order. I think it's a, a fine line that we all walk between, you know, who's doing the day-to-day management of City Hall, and what's the city council's role for that. And, you know, for what it's worth, I actually like challenged the mayor to look into this a little further, because I understand that the intent of this is to make sure that time off accrued is accounted for, but I'd also love to see the overtime that city employees put in, folks that go to commission meetings as administrative staff. It's my understanding that this system is not actually gonna track that, it's gonna track the, the times that you're working between eight-thirty to four-thirty, which is when City Hall's open, which is awesome and important. But, you know, for what it's worth, we have city employees who go above and beyond and, you know, sit, like Attorney Dagnan, she didn't take time off today, I'm assuming, to accommodate for the hours that she's putting in tonight. We see it from department heads all the time, so I don't think it's the city council's job to influence the day-to-day management, I think we can encourage and support the mayor, but at the end of the day, to me, what's important is that it is being tracked, and I think that's awesome. So, I applaud the council for, for having this discussion, but that's just my opinion. Thank you.
Counselor Bacon?
Thank you, Mr. President. So, I guess I will give this perspective. We have the fiduciary responsibility of approving the budget, and the things where cities and businesses lose a lot of money are arenas that don't show in the budget. What we see are the salaries. Paid time off or time off that is not accounted for is a huge loss in terms of time is money in any company that does not have time tracking. And for those of us who've been on the council for a while, we're aware that over ten years ago, there was a move to accomplish what this ordinance that we passed requires. We who are elected to office are temporary, the ordinances that we create are to sustain the stability of the city. We had a mayor who had no interest in implementing the tracking of time for a number of years, and now, happily, to me, we have a mayor who is interested in it. But, just like we won't be here forever, neither will he. But the point of passing an ordinance isn't to question what our mayor today is doing, is to set a framework as to how the business of the city will be conducted going forward. And we're here to protect the taxpayers' interest, and time is money, and it's a huge loss when it isn't tracked well, particularly when you pay out tens of thousands of dollars Um, so it's important to know if the banks are full or if they're used, that it's coming out of the bank. So I think this is supportive of the mayor and it's supportive of future fiscal accountability. So I think it's a win-win. I don't think there's any intent in it to offend the mayor. It's more to support the taxpayers and the mayor. Thank you.
Anyone further? Councilor McGivern?
Thank you, Mr. President. The, I'm, I'm kind of torn in the middle of this one, but this, this issue goes back to, uh, the nineties when, uh, Bill Hamilton and then Danny Saskovich were mayor. And, uh, both, I think, supported something like this, but nothing ever happened. Uh, the end of Mike Sullivan's term, which was a very long one, um, he designated a person out of the law department to implement the munis system and to work with department heads who literally were either because they felt inadequate to use the munis system or just were opposed to doing it within their department, you know, needed some encouragement and some enforcement, you know, through the mayor's office. And this special person, on special assignment, this person started that. It was making some progress. Mayor Pluta continued with that, but it was never finished. Mayor Morse fired the individual. That individual later was reconciled and made whole by the city when she won us, won, um, her case in court and, and that's, that's all history. Um, I, I believe that Mayor Garcia wants this. We have an order coming out of finance that kind of falls right into this. But unfortunately, I agree with Councilor Jordine that, you know, we, we've waited for 30 years and it hasn't happened. It, it, it shouldn't be by ordinance, but sometimes you gotta do what you gotta do because if you don't, nothing gets done.
Councilor Jordine?
Yeah, um, just briefly, I think that's the point. This is nothing to do pro or con. I, again, I've been a advocate of Mayor Garcia here. I, he's just been on a run of great decisions. I've been extremely supportive and he's been extremely supportive of this. Um, I just think history, as Councilor McGivern correctly points out, tells us that we need a basic framework that transcends all of us, that just basically says this ordinance is extremely brief. It just says you'll have a system. Doesn't, he gets to say, you know, how it's used and, and this and that, but we've learned that it just doesn't happen. And what if the next mayor says, yeah, that's great, um, but I'm changing all that. It, it's up to the whim or they lose focus on this, um, three or four years from now or however long Mayor Garcia chooses to serve. Um, you know, this is the point. This is in the best interest of the, of the taxpayers and it's actually good practice for the, in, in his protection for the employees. Because now they know that their time is being accurately, um, tracked. And that there's a system there that the department head can look and actually see, okay, my people this and this and that. And the mayor overall can see, okay, this department, this here, why do I have so much overtime? Well, look at, you had all this vacation used here maybe or, or whatever, but you can run also a, a number of great reports. I think everybody's in agreement that it needs to be done. What we're just saying is you need to have a basic rule that just requires it to be done. That, that's the point. And that they maintain it in the future.
Anyone further?
Alright, on the motion, Mr. President.
Motion is to override the veto. The clerk will call a roll. If you vote yes, you're voting to override.
Jordine?
Yes.
Malton Anna Valdez?
No.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbaletti?
No.
Puelo?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
No.
Jenny Rivera?
No.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
No.
Bartley?
Yes.
Seven yeas, five nays.
We wrote that, doesn't get the override.
True.
Alright, next is number nine from, from the mayor, a letter appointing, um,
Mr. President, make take on nine, 10, 12, and 13 and send them all to public service?
Motion is take up as a package, nine, 10, 12, and 13.
Can you send 11 too? I, I, I wanna, I wanna talk about that one too, Mr. Chairman.
So nine to 11,
Nine to thirteen.
Take up as a package. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Nine is for the store commission appointment. Same for 10. Uh, Board of Appeals is 11. Um, 12 is Commissioner for the Soldiers Memorial. And 13 is the Library Board. So all those to public service. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? 14 is from the mayor expressing support for the gas electric, uh, proposed LNG infrastructure.
Motion to receive.
Motion is to receive. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? 15 is from the mayor, uh, electing a contract, uh, for ambulance services.
Finance.
That would go to finance. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? 16 is, um, executive order.
Actually, can I ask one question regarding item 15, Mr. President?
Sure. So 15, Councilor Jordine?
Yes. They reference in, in this one paragraph letter, it says, please be advised that after completing the RFP process, we elected to contract with Cataldo Ambulance, which is fine. That's the mayor's prerogative, but can we get an actual copy of the agreement and what? Can we get some sort of statement from the mayor that he's changing the ambulance service from Action to Cataldo, like why one versus the other? And, you know, like what, what are the changes that we can expect, that the citizens can expect? Um, there's none of that detail here. It just says, we've changed ambulance companies in the city.
Yeah, so for 15, it's going to go to finance with a request for the contract.
Details, yeah.
And other details as to why the change.
Great.
And, Mr. President?
Yeah, Councilor Bartley?
Yeah, I, and I, I agree with that comment, but I think it might be helpful if, um, I'm sure I have the current contract on my computer somewhere, but I think it might be helpful if we could get both the proposed new one and the current contract, just so you have something to compare.
Alright.
Is that possible?
Yep.
Thank you.
Getting that written down. So that will go to finance with those requests. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Back to
16 is a motion to receive.
16. And this is the executive order regarding the blighted and vacant buildings. Motion is to receive. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? 17 is the minutes of the meeting for August 2nd and September 1st.
Motion to receive and adopt?
Motion is to receive and adopt. Any changes? Any questions? No? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? 18 is from the order.
We suspend the rules and take 18, 19, 20, and 21, refer to committee on finance.
Motion to suspend rules, take up 18 to 21. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? 18 is the agreement regarding police cruisers. 19 is the memorandum of agreement between the Professional Services Union. Uh, 20 is the memorandum of agreement between the Sea of Hook and Professional Service Union, uh, zoning, uh, official position. And then 21 is the Board of Public Works, uh, agreement between them. So, Councilor McGivern?
Uh, real quick, late, not to confuse everyone, but later coming out of finance, there's some orders, transfers that are connected to at least one of these MOAs. Um, it, it's very, it, it got very confusing as to we, our discussion was mostly about a zoning officer, which I think there's a lot of grading of that position is, there's a lot of support for it. But there's some confusion because we did not have this, all the language in front of us until with the emails that we received, uh, 10 days ago or so. So I'm just suggesting we can do either way when the appropriation comes out. We can connect it to what we did receive, uh, but at the same time, maybe it's better putting them in committee for another round of discussion. We do have the 17th penciled in for, uh, for a finance committee meeting because it's the only date between now and our next meeting that's available because of the holiday and all these marching parades we've been in. But it's, uh, I think it's something we can do real quick and get it right back out.
Alright, so all these to finance. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? 22 is
Mr. President, I would like to suspend the rules and take up 22 with 47 and 48?
47, 48. Give me one second, please. 47, 48. Yeah. So motions take up 22, 47, and 48 as a package. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So 22 is a letter from the chief regarding, uh, remarks made in September's, uh, first city council meeting. 47 is from Councilor Malala Valdez and from Councilor Rivera, or let the mayor create a fund, a public safety department requesting, uh, $500,000 for that. And then 48 is from Councilor Malala Valdez and Councilor Rivera, or an RFP, RFP be created to study a community respond model type program that is outside the police department. Uh, and what is the motion for these three?
Thank you. Can I speak on them real quick? Thank you, Mr. President. Um, so the reason why I wanted to, um, take them up together, um, I think 22 was a response to a comment that I made on the September 1st meeting. Um, when I see it, it was a lot of complaining about the department and one of my pet peeves when people complain, complain, but there's no actual solution. So 47, 48 is sort of like what I'm envisioning being a possible solution to hopefully change damage or change of how the community perceives the police department. So to address the letter itself, one, I, I'll thank, um, Chief, um, Pratt for writing the letter and the police. Uh, I believe in co-governance. I believe if something doesn't land the way that it should land or should have land, um, you as another human being is, should call it out and should mention it so that we can all learn better and work better and move forward together. Um, but in that specific letter, there were two asks. Um, the first ask was that I, um, recant the comments from September 1st and that I apologize to the men and women of the police department. The second ask was, um, that I recuse myself going forward from any conversation around the police. Now, I, when it comes to those two asks, I am going to modify those asks. Um, first part, as far as taking back the comments that I made on September 1st. Following that meeting, following the press conferences, following everything that come, came after that. As much as there were, I was receiving emails like Councilor Anderson Burgos was receiving, being called a spic, a welfare monger, all those sort of things. There were also people reaching out to me that voted for me, saying thank you for saying those comments. Thank you because that perception of the police is a reality in some of the people in our city. Now, when I see those comments, I don't mean to say that every single individual within the police department is a quote-unquote bad apple. And I've said that during that meeting. And it's unfortunate that the only part that was said from that meeting was, again, comment. So going back to the people that reached out to me and saying thank you. Again, what I said in that meeting is a reality for some of the people in our community. And as an elected official and a voice of the people, I have a duty to represent that voice within these chambers. So I cannot take back those words because those words meant something for a lot of people in our community. Now, the second part, the second ask, recuse myself going forward. Those that voted for me, those that are here with me that will probably, if we decide to run again next year, will probably run against each other, know where I stand. I have not changed the way and where I stood on, on this specific department and how we can improve going better. And the chief himself knows where I stand. We've had conversations. You know, it's unfortunate, again, that the last nine months of us working together, uh, like, uh, Mr. President said, a lot of good things have come out of the console. This is the only part that sort of was picked on. Like it was the worst thing in our community. When we've, it's been a long nine months, but we have gotten to a point where we can work together. I want to mention, and I was talking about Chief Scott, I actually wanted to mention the dinosaur here. So this dinosaur here, I think it was left by Consular Lisi. I don't know, her son gave it to her or not. But during my meeting with Chief Scott, he also has a drawing of a dinosaur. And I'm not sure who was the former chief that settled into this, but the reason why he has a drawing of the dinosaur is because it's a reminder that we don't want to be a dinosaur. And since that meeting with Chief Scott, ever since I saw this dinosaur here that I've left here since I started, it took a different meaning. Because I believe we shouldn't be dinosaurs. We need to improve. We need to do better going forward. But part of not being, staying being a dinosaur is calling out the negative and the BS that was a dinosaur at that point. So those were the two asks. Uh, and then so as far as recanting myself or recusing myself from conversations going forward, I also cannot do that. Now, those are the two asks. The second part of the first ask for an apology. Now that, I can do a version of. Because I ran on unity and at the end of the day, we're Team Holyoke. And if there's any sort of comment that brought divisiveness and made it feel that we're not appreciating the work that we are all doing to keep the city going, then I apologize for that. You know, I apologize for those individuals that are in the police department trying to make it work, make it better. Making it so that it's not the dinosaur that it used to be. I apologize to those people. I apologize for not being able to dismantle the systems that have got us to this point in the short nine months that I've been here. These decades and centuries of systems that have ingrained in us, that have made us, it put us in this situation that we are in today. I apologize that I can't, couldn't get that done in the nine months that I've been here. But for all, I apologize to all the people of Holyoke because again, we have come far in the last nine months. We're having conversations. We're doing a lot of good things for our city and I don't want this one moment from outsiders saying that we're not working together, that we're hating police, even the ones that voted no or would call the police, whatever situation were to happen. So if that is not enough for people, similar to Consular, what Consular Rivera said earlier, there's an email, there's a phone, y'all have access to me and we can have that conversation. But I will not, what I will not allow is to be silenced. I choose not to be silenced. Because we fought way too long to get to this point, way too far to get to this point, to be, to either take back what I said or to never speak on certain topics ever again. I refuse to do that. An apology as a fellow human being, we can do that. So, thank you.
Anyone further? So for 22, 47, and 48, motion is to
Finance?
Receive, refer to finance, copy to the mayor?
Um, public safety.
If I could just ask a question?
Hold on.
No problem with that, but what, what's the purpose of finance?
Well, because they're asking for money to create a department, but oh, yeah, public safety. I mean, there's no transfer in from the mayor, but
Public safety.
Yeah, my intention was sorry, it was public safety because there is no actual transfer yet.
Alright, so 40, 22, 47, 48, motion is receive and then to send to public safety, copy to the mayor. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Cut up here. 23, uh, from the Office of Planning and Development, uh, zoning, uh, text change, 50% living.
Mr. President?
Yep.
Um, can we take up 23 with item 38D, please?
Second.
Motion to suspend rules, take up 23 with 38D. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? 38D, the command ordinance is referring an order amend the zoning ordinance to read any home construction. For zones to be greater than 50% living space, uh, recommend that be denied. Uh, Councilor Bacon?
Thank you, Mr. President. So item 23 was a second letter from the planning board relative to the zoning text change after a legal question had been raised uh, relative to interior space, um, size. And so through the process, it was clarified that interior space cannot be controlled in a local ordinance. And so I have requested that legal and the building commissioner look at alternative ways to prevent the creation of an industrial appearing building being built in a residential agriculture zone. But nonetheless, um, state law precludes the ability to address it in this way. So we are bringing to you a five zero vote once we understood that, uh, to deny this particular zone change.
Okay. Anyone further? So motion for 38, his motion is to receive and adopt?
The motion for 23 is to receive and the, and the motion for 38D is to receive, adopt, and deny.
Alright, so 23, motion is receive. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? 38D, motion is receive, adopt, which is to deny?
Do we?
Councilor McGivern?
Just let the record show what Councilor Bacon said about the reasons for denial?
With
We have to do that for
Yeah, with the reasons stated by, uh, Councilor Bacon.
Compliance with state law.
Yeah. You need a roll call for this, correct?
I believe so.
So clerk will call a roll for 38D. If you vote yes, you're voting yes to deny.
Correct.
It's usually the back wire, it's way of doing it, but just to make sure.
Jordane?
Yes.
Maldonado Velez?
Yes.
McGee? McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbaletti?
Yes.
Wallow?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
You vote your approv, or voted yes to deny. There we go. Alright, twenty-four from the Plan Economic Development Letter, uh, from Historic Commission thanking the city council.
Motion to receive.
Motion to receive, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Twenty-five.
Motion to receive.
Letter regarding, uh, the incidents during the ordinance committee, motion is to receive, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Twenty-six is the public school, middle school update, uh, August to October twenty, twenty-two. Motion be to receive. All those in favor?
Aye.
If
Go ahead, Counselor McGivern.
If I could, um, I, I know the joint committee is, or what do we call it now? I'm sorry.
Yep.
Schools and city council.
It's, it's still, yeah, it's complicated, but it's complicated subject, but you can still call it the Joint School Committee and City Council.
Okay, thank you. I, I know they've met on it and I know the building committee continues to meet on it. I, I think this might be the beginning of what eventually is going to be the vote with the, uh, what this body has to decide on. And that's, that's bonding, which is finance. And I don't think we're quite ready because affordability is not being talked about to a level because they're still in the, uh, I don't want to say pre-design stage, but they're still in the transitional design stage of the proposed middle school itself. Um, a lot of work has been done, a lot of good work, but we gotta start gearing up towards what can the city afford on a monthly, uh, quarterly payback for the bonding itself? And that's the numbers that are the toughest ones to deal with. And as we get there, this, I think this, uh, this, um, uh, upgrade should come to the up, progress report should come to the finance committee itself.
So send that to finance?
Please.
Motion to send that one to finance, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Uh, twenty-seven is a petition for speed humps on Hillside Ave. Motion be sent to ordinance, although, oh, and to DPW for the hearing. So to ordinance.
I have a question.
To DPW, uh, Counselor Rivera.
Um, why wouldn't something like that go to public safety?
Because if you're putting in speed humps, there's measurements that have to be done, everything else, so it's pursuant to an ordinance to put the speed humps in.
Well
Uh, Counselor Bacon.
And also the engineer has to make a determination that they meet the requirements to go there.
Right.
So That can't be done in public safety?
No, it has to go through ordinance.
Okay.
It is a public safety issue.
Right, it kind of doesn't make sense.
But it's more, it's not so much to do with the public safety matter, but in order to install the speed humps in.
So the conversation can't happen in public safety?
You could. No, no, what, what, no, it's a good question. What you can do is send it to ordinance with a copy to public safety to, yeah.
Right, so I, um, I'm just trying to understand because there's a lot of orders that's supposed to go to public safety and they technically don't. So to me, it's like, I don't know, I feel like there's like a game being played, but maybe it's just me. Alright.
So to ordinance with a copy to DPW?
Mm-hmm.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, twenty-eight is
Twenty-nine, I think they should both go to ordinance.
Ordinance?
Twenty-eight, twenty-nine, she of the package, all those in favor?
Aye.
This is Community Outreach for One Cabbage Street, uh, so is twenty-nine, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thirty is from Hoak Park and Rackets, The Minutes for April fifth and May ninth.
Motion to receive.
Motion to receive, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thirty-one is from the Fire Commission and that's July twenty-first, August, motion is to receive, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Uh, thirty-two is Mass DOT, a letter removal of application from the electric billboard permit from September eighth. Uh, motion be to
Receive, I guess.
Motion is receive, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Off to petitions, uh, petition is for a street vendor license, um,
To ordinance.
To ordinance, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thirty-four is a new marijuana manufacturing establishment at one oh nine Lima Street.
Thirty-four and thirty-five.
To ordinance. And thirty-five is for four twenty Ray Street, that's also to ordinance.
Ordinance.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thirty-six is a petition for renewal.
Uh, it's a renewal, Mr. President, if there's no changes in the, uh, the holder of the second-hand license and if, uh, taxes are up to date, I would suggest that we could adopt it this evening.
Everything is current and this is just a renewal.
Motion approve.
Is to approve, uh, the special permit. Clerk will call roll, vote yes, you're voting for the special permit.
Jordane?
Yes.
Maldonado Velez?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbaletti?
Yes.
Wallow?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Revote your approved, that one. Thirty-seven is a new special permit for a driveway at Two Orchard Street and that's to ordinance.
DJR.
Uh, DJNR, sorry. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Uh, President's report, go quickly due to time. Uh, there has been a request for me to remind counselors, uh, of emails, reply all, that's the open meeting law issue, you have to be very careful there. So if you get an email with everyone and you start replying to everyone, that's a violation or a potential violation of open meeting law. So don't reply all, just a friendly reminder there. Um, October twenty-first is the mayor's reception from six to eight at the Volleyball Hall of Fame. You should have gotten an invite for that, but just as a reminder, that's coming up. Uh, I did sit with the mayor today and a member of the Public Works, um, they give an update on the EPA issues and the consent decree with regards to the combined sewer overflow. So there's going to be requests for funds dealing with those issues. Uh, if you have questions, please sit with the mayor on that one because it's very complex as to what the EPA wants and why we're in the situation we are. The mayor is more than happy to come in, but, um, that was a, it was a two-hour meeting just dealing with that issue. So we're gonna have to get caught up on that one. Um, let's see here. Also, um, I did attend an event with the mayor, um, Counselor Anderson Burgos, uh, yesterday with regards to the Hoak Authority Authority and the new units going up by Carlos Segua Park. Um, I highly recommend if you reach out to Matt Mayville to take a tour of that new facility. It's absolutely beautiful and that's phase one of three phases. Let's see here, the, I brought up earlier and I, I guess I'm gonna mention it again, not to belabor the point, but planning board letters, uh, department head emails, communications by counselors back and forth between, uh, department heads. I'm not gonna fault anyone, I'm just going to say, as was said earlier, we have to respect each other and kind of take a step back. In the heat of the moment, we're kind of losing track of what we've been doing for nine months in the sense of working really well together. People get lost and have passion on an issue. And things get said that really I don't think are meant to be mean or hateful in any way, shape, or form. Uh, tonight, comments were made in this chamber by several people. They don't belong here. We have been a lot better than that leading up to tonight. So I just ask, as a very simple reminder, please respect each other. Uh, I know certain issues come up that we get a little more heated on or a little more passionate, but I'm just asking us, please take a step back from that. Um, i- it's not what we need, uh, going forward for this city. So I'm just asking that we please watch what we say in this chamber. Uh, with that, uh, I do believe that's all the reports I have. Are there any dates or anything that I'm missing that counselors are aware of, of other events?
No, I'm just gonna make a comment. I think the, the salute to Holyoke was another rousing success. And, uh, uh, for the first time in the ten years we've done this, eleven years, we didn't do it one year because of COVID, but ten years we've had it. Uh, first time we ever had a mayor participate fully, so I'm really grateful that Mary Garcia came. Uh, we had a few counselors, I'm really grateful for the counselors that were able to make it. A few contacted me beforehand with, uh, with personal conflicts and I really appreciate them reaching out and I, and I know their conflicts are coming together. So hopefully they're, that's, they're all resolved, but we had a great day. A lot of civic organizations, thank you to the civic organizations that participated fully. And it was a rousing event and I look forward to, um, uh, you know, helping pull it together again next year. Thanks.
Counselor McGivern?
Just on behalf of the Parade Committee, the annual golf tournament is October sixteenth. It's our second year in memory of Mike Gahern, a longtime Parade Committee member from, uh, from Northampton. But a, but a big, uh, a big supporter of the parade within, St. Patrick's parade within the city of Holyoke. Uh, there's a few openings for, uh, teams, or if you just want to come and join the tailgate at the, um, it's just a lot of fun and, uh, for a good, for a good cause.
Counselor Murphy Rumbaletti?
Super quick, thank you. Um, two things, uh, Saturday, October fifteenth is, there's a lot of stuff going on in Holyoke, my friend. So, um, there is, the brick race is happening in the morning. Um, then there's the cemetery tours at West Eryhurst. If you have not gone to those, guys, you're missing out. Um, it's also the food, or the food festival happens at night on High Street. Um, I know I'm missing, oh, doors open, Holyoke is happening all throughout the city. Go check out exploreholyoke.com. Aaron Vega did not tell me to make this announcement. I'm just doing it because I love it and I'm excited. And the other thing, um, I'm putting together tables for the homework house, um, annual breakfast, I'm the table captain. So if anyone would like to join, there's plenty of room, um, at our table. Um, and it's on Thursday, October twentieth, bright and early, eight AM at the Lock Cabin. So, um, join me or not. God, I won't hold it against you if eight AM is not your thing, so thank you.
Counselor Malala Velez?
Thank you, Mister President. I'm just going off one more event that's happening on the fifteenth because you're right, there is a lot happening the weekend of the fifteenth. If anyone says there's nothing to do in Holyoke, they're lying. Um, but on the Friday, the fourteenth, there's a grand opening of the artery as well. So it's a gallery slash makers space, um, sort of thing happening right across the street next to Crave. So just wanted to put that in there as well.
We approved a grant for it, so go check it out.
Also, Counselor Malala Velez did volunteer for the, uh, Tourism Advisory Committee, so thank you for doing that. That's what, right?
He forgot about it.
No, I did, but then Jeffrey was like, oh, I think other, but, okay, cool.
Oh, no, no, we're just approving it. It's approved, we're done.
It's approved.
You can't take it back. Alright, so with that, we're on to, uh, reports to committee, off to ordinance.
Thirty-eight B.
So command ordinance was referred, an order to zone change application from DR to BH for forty-one Temple Street, recommend that be adopted. Uh, Counselor Bacon.
Thank you, Mister President. Um, so this was a very complicated zone change request with a very long history, exceeding ten years of purchase and use at the current location, which I believe we are all familiar with. So we went down every path that could be considered relative to this zone change request. And after investigating every variable that we could think of, we came full circle. And so the recommendation that you have before you is the recommended and only remedy that based on all of the public hearing information we received and the legal considerations we gave to other methods, if you will, to accomplish the use. Um, we have before us this recommendation from our committee. I will note, um, to create some context, that while this is technically a spot zone, I would refer to the executive order that our mayor has just issued to our entire city. And one thing that we need to always consider when we're looking at zoning is will we create a blighted property or area? And so I think we have to give that heavy consideration as this particular property was always and only a garage. And it was always and only ever used as a garage. And the particular owner, within a year of buying the property, had sought through the city properly to get a special permit. In the public hearing process and from the planning department, there is a gap in terms of details as to why. But at some point after requesting a special permit, the applicant withdrew it. The only time I see this happening is when they get advice from somebody in the city that there's a problem with it. So we don't know why, we don't know, um, what was said at that time. We do know that, um, the only record in the planning department relative to the building of the building was that it was described as a shed, which we all know it is not. Um, so long story short, my opinion, um, in terms of representing the three-two vote out of committee is that the owner attempted to do everything that he thought he should do within his understanding of the law. I think somewhere the ball got dropped on the city side. Um, and for whatever reasons, the person continued to function in the way that he's been functioning there for ten-plus years. So does the length of time make something right or wrong? No. Does somebody that did something wrong in the past make something right in the present? No. Um, but we're faced with a situation now that, given the current zoning laws that we have before us, um, this recommendation coming to you allows the current owner, um, with vast majority support from the community to continue in the way that he has been, um, for ten years. So it doesn't envision that there would be any drastic change. We heard, um, a lot of testimony from the neighbors in favor. There was one person who spoke in opposition. And as a frame of reference, I would offer to the council our twenty eighteen vote on the Franco Club, which was also a spot zone. But again, it was a building that had never been used for anything other than, something other than residential. And so I think, um, not that they're the same, but that they are similar. Um, I would just put that out there as a frame of reference. So I think, um, certainly any member of the committee is welcome to, um, add information. I've tried to be as detailed in the explanation as I can, but if I miss something, don't hesitate to add. So that is how we bring the recommendation to approve the zone change tonight. Thank you.
Counselor Rivera?
Thank you, Mister President. So on this particular, um, issue, I voted yes, um, made it three-two so that I can come to the larger council so that everyone can have a conversation on the issue and so that other councils have the ability to, uh, vote on it. Um, I don't technically agree with the spot zoning piece. Um, I don't agree with the spot zoning piece, uh, that we did in the past at Franco's as well. Um, in my mind, the, the, the idea for some of these, um, rules with regards to zoning laws and regulations, they're put in place for a reason. Um, and it's to help redesign neighborhoods so that they're more friendlier to the people that live in the community in the long run. Not just for that moment while someone is owning that particular business or that particular, whatever they're running in that moment. Um, so for me, this time around, I'll be voting no, just because I don't, I, first of all, spot zoning is technically illegal. In both situations, if we do decide, decide to move forward with the one at Spring, at Temple Street, if any residents decide to push the issue and they decide to sue us for it, it will become an issue. Will someone do it? Probably not, because they don't have the money for it, but that doesn't mean we should do it because someone won't push the issue, won't push back on us. Um, the other piece for me is, is that if Attorney Degnan could possibly, if we could suspend the rules to have her speak on, some more on the issue, right? So like, I, to my understanding So like, I, to my understanding is, like, she even gave them the opportunity to prove, like, that there was no break in service, so that they can continue, um, with that allocation or that, the designation that it once was. And they failed to put, to, to, to put together the proof. So pretty much we've extended, it sounds like, uh, 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 the city solicitor's office has extended or, or made the rules, stretched out the rules to a certain extent so that they could fit in, and they still have not been able to fit within those rules, uh, unless she can speak incorrectly if I'm wrong with regards to that.
Motion, need a motion to suspend the rules to ask the city solicitor, uh, or legal department questions? Second? All those in favor? All those opposed?
No.
No.
We, we had a whole committee here.
We had a whole hearing.
Okay. That's cool, they don't have to, it's fine. No problem.
Counselor has a question for legal department. I'm voting yes, so. Yes. All those in favor? Say aye. All those opposed?
No.
No.
Show a hand. So those allow for legal department answer questions, raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. So.
Motion fails, right? Because nine is suspend the rules.
Seven, no, no, allow the legal department to answer questions. It's always been seven.
No, it's not, it's suspension of the rules. It's Robert's rules of law.
It's allow, we've always done it as a seven vote to allow legal to answer questions, not suspending the rules, but just to answer questions. I understand what you're saying, but that's how we've always proceeded with that vote.
To have a lot, well, first of all, it's obviously a suspension of the rules, Mr. President, because to have any non-member speaking requires a suspension of the rules. The only people who have floor privileges to speak here are members.
All right, then if you want it as nine votes, then it fails.
I mean, that's just always the way it is.
We've always done it by seven, but that's fine.
I, I, I would like to comment and say, like, not for nothing, but we have a president in the chambers right now, and the president should speak and actually take onus on the situation and not have people on the side making comments out of order without being spoken to. Because technically, the president has the floor and the president is the one that should be speaking. You need to ask permission to speak, so that way you can speak, not speak out of turn or out of order. Whether you know the rules or not, that's cool. Awesome. But at the end of the day, we need to give our president the respect that he needs for being president. That's just a piece that I'll add, and it is what it is. We decide to do whatever we want to do because that's what we've been doing for the last 30 years. Thank you for your time, Mr. President.
Counselor Anderson Burgos?
I, you know, I was always, I was actually, um, encouraged by a long-sitting city counselor that even though if you do not agree with the person that either filed an order or whatever their statement they're making, whatever, that we should always allow that voice to be heard. Like if he, if, if our counselor, one of our counselors, one of our colleagues is asking for a legal opinion, then allow him that. Like we, there's stuff that, that's been voted on before that I don't approve or whatever, but because of this respect that I have for this, you know, counselor, um, I've, I've listened to his comment, which is allow them to speak or allow them to be heard. And I, I think we should reconsider, allow legal to speak. Thank you.
Motion is to reconsider the vote to allow the counselor to have a question to the legal department. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I only heard one no.
I have the motion to suspend the rules. I'll, I'll, I'll make the motion to suspend the rules for limited pers, purpose of, uh, of, of, just trying to drive through this, okay?
Counselor Rivera?
Thank you, Mr. Bartley. I needed that.
Counselor Rivera, question to legal.
Uh, Mrs. Degnan, if you remember what I had stated maybe about 15 minutes ago, um, it would be awesome if you could kind of answer that because I kind of don't recall now because my mind got mumbled up, muffled a little.
Yes. Uh, good evening, councilors. Uh, I did write a legal opinion on this issue, and, uh, there are a lot of questions that had to be answered. It was like a three-part opinion. And it's true that, um, you know, one of the issues that I had was, you know, getting information about whether or not we have a, um, abandonment. I mean, that, that's the rule of law. And I did not receive any from the attorney that I was seeking information from. Then, um, as we went through the ordinance committee, there were a lot of people bringing up facts that, hey, this is, this has never been a break and it's always been used that way. Um, and so that's it. I mean, it's, it's not abandoned and you can continue to use. Um, I didn't have that information, but I have to say, I mean, if it's true that it was used, um, for this purpose, a repair shop, I believe it was, um, then yeah, I mean, you're not getting to the, to the spot zoning anymore because you've answered the second question, and that is whether or not it has been, um, not been abandoned. So, um, taking that into consideration, if that's true, then yeah, I mean, we're not living in a spot zone anymore legally. If it hasn't been abandoned, they can continue to use. Um, but you're right, Counselor, uh, um, Rivera, I was asking for proof, but I was asking for proof from that lawyer. I don't know what happened. I do know that, um, the owner bought the property in 2009 and, um, he did apply, I think in 2010, for a special permit to change the structure, basically. And for whatever reason, um, it never happened. Uh, he withdrew without prejudice and, and unfortunately, we couldn't clear that fact up. But, um, I'm going to be, um, deferring to the folks that have been indicating that has been used, uh, for that purpose. So I hope that answers your question, counsel.
So, yeah, thank you. So it sounds like we're just gonna go based on the fact that we're gonna believe that they say they've been doing it the, all this time. There is no actual factual proof that they have. So I guess for me, again, it's like we're, we're just doing things to kind of make sure certain people get certain things and do things, and without no actual factual proof that they've actually done it in the past. And then to, 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 to actually speak on another point with regards to blight, there are a lot of people that are looking for garage space in Hoyoke, trust and believe. A lot of people will buy that property quick in a heartbeat and store motorcycles, jet skis, whatever it is that you want. It will be sold in a heartbeat, I promise you that. So to say blight and to say that it will destroy a neighborhood and all the other stuff, to me, that's kind of fear mongering to a certain extent, and that's not right overall. Just in ju, just my point of view. Thank you.
Counselor Bartley?
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Burges. I, I actually took that argument to be the exact opposite of what I just heard. Um, so, and, and as far as historical proof goes, Mr. President, what would, what would satisfy historical proof? Well, we probably don't have video going back the use of the building for the last 50 years. But we do have veteran councilors that have been in this room for decades, and we have historical memories of what it was used for. So to me, what Attorney Degnan just said completely undercuts any possible argument of a spot zone theory that could, could come before any kind of a, any kind of a forum. So to, to, to use that as a red, as a red herring in this situation, and to say another red herring, well, you know, it, the, the building would get used somehow and it wouldn't dissolve into blight. We're talking about a person's livelihood, a person's business. So I think the historical precedent has been said multiple times by veteran councilors and by people, the community that came before us, that it, that had been used that way, that it was never intentionally abandoned. So, and so there, there might have been a small respite when, when there's a bankruptcy proceeding, if, if the president recalls, but otherwise, it has been used continually for that for decades. When the zoning rules came into play, as one of my veteran councilors has mentioned numerous times, this is a creature of law, the legislature of the 70s. This building has been in use going back for decades prior to that. So again, what Attorney Degnan just said, I think really bolsters the argument that we should support this. More, more to the point, th, this is, this is a, listen, maybe it wasn't the best argument put forth by, by the petitioner, and, and maybe, maybe there is a possible way to do by special permit, but let's think in terms of reality. We've got a, we've got a long-term business, but other than one person, virtually a beloved member of that small pocket neighborhood, and, and it, it diversifies, diversifies our tax base. So I, you know, to me, th, there's a lot of wins here. I, I know what the planning board said, and I know that they deal a lot in theory and they're to be respected and admired for the work that they do, Mr. President. Respected and admired. In this case, just like in the case where we, we, we did not accept their recommendation on the church, I think we have a public duty to really consider our constituents, the broader tax base of the city government, to keep on board another commercial, at our very lovely commercial rate that you and I talk about a lot, and we, we vote on that all the time, that's, it's gonna help expand, expand the tax base of the city, to support those very city services, the people who, I'm grateful to hear their point of view, came up to the microphone tonight, very passionately talked about social services that are in dire need for the city. Again, you've heard long-term councilors talking about how this city, we, we serve an indigent population, we service the poor. If you take away a commercial entity, that takes away another bit of, another little bit of money that you, we can use to help maybe service the poor. So I'm hopeful, I'm hopeful that we'll, we'll kind of consider, consider the petitioner, consider the longstanding work that he's done to the community, consider the fact that the vast majority of people who spoke in the multiple public hearings, the vast majority were in great, of neighbors, were in great support. Thank you.
Counselor Bacon?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I just wanted to clarify, um, for the counselor who had the question about the spot zoning, that if the owner sold the current property and we do not grant the zone change, a future buyer could not use it as a garage. Just to be clear. Thank you.
Counselor McGivern?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, first of all, I do apologize to Counselor Izzy Rivera. I, I thought you had an open-ended request for our, our good city solicitor, and that's why I said no to the vote, which, by the way, I disagree with suspension of rules. We have a city solicitor assigned to us by rule. And, and that, you know, the Attorney Degnan or Attorney Bissonette, you know, they, they seem to both do it, they both do it very well. They do it under the, you know, the, the guidance of, uh, the city solicitor Lisa Ball herself. And we, we should have access to legal advice at any time that, legal advice, anytime that we need it. Again, I've always said, only, the only legal opinion we can get that, that carries the umbrella with it is if the city solicitor signs off on the good opinions of Attorney Degnan or Attorney, or Attorney Bissonette. And I thank Attorney Degnan and I thank the ordinance committee for sticking with this because it is complex, it is lengthy, and it is, it was time-consuming, but I think there's a lot to look at. And I'm gonna be very quick because I think I was the one that said blight, and that was not meant to be a scare tactic when I said that. That was the what if, if we don't do something. If we don't do something, a person who has invested money into this property may be put in a position to sell that and not get their money back. That's not right for us, by zoning, by ordinance, to, to put a person out of their, their own investment when they did it under the, under what they thought was the correct and appropriate way as a business owner. What I want to talk about, though, more important to me, is history and spot zoning. I, I agree with Attorney Degnan, and I'm the one that said it at the, at the ordinance committee meeting, is with the exception of one, and I respect the one person resident who spoke against it, because if, you know, if I had a condo there too, I'd speak against it. But the number of residents, every other resident that came forward at the public hearing spoke in favor of the zone change and spoke in favor, not just because of what, what the owner does for the neighborhood, but because he's kept the property up, he took the property that was rundown and made it good again, and made it visible as part of the residential neighborhood, but made it, you know, uh, uh, something that was, that shines now that, and, and he's a good neighbor on top of it, and that's why I believe they spoke in favor of it. But the history, it's not a spot zone because the courts can only rule a spot zoning, and the first thing they look at is, did we, the legislative body in the city, vote on the zone change to only benefit one person, the petitioner? We have a lot of testimony that says the exact opposite. It benefits a lot more than just the petitioner, and the history is what makes the most sense to me, is the condos were built on a junkyard, the garage was built next to the junkyard. After you go down past the, the junkyard, it's all commercial. We, we can't rezone commercial out of Hoyoke. We're a planned industrial city. As a homeowner, I want to protect this industrial city because it means a lot to my property tax, means a lot to jobs for the people who live here, it means a lot of hope and future, it means investment. Protecting business is protecting a residential neighborhood. It's not a spot zone, only the courts can rule the spot zone. The history says this gentleman did the right thing. Unfortunately, the building department is the one that's putting us in this position because if the building department said, this is, could be grandfathered, or I'm not getting the right, uh, right terminology here, the, uh, because of the, the time limit was up over the two years.
Pre-existing.
Pre-existing, non-conforming use. Thank you. You know, we wouldn't be sitting here with a zone change request. It's the building department that put it in front of us. I don't like Business Highway, we give Business Highway to Pleasant and Hampton Street, we can give Business Highway here because no matter what happens, there's no gas station going on his property.
All right. Counselor Mercer Ambeleti?
Sorry. Um, I'm, I'm gonna say what I said the last time with the last zone change, and I'll probably say it again at another zone change. I know it's not a great, uh, approach, or it's not a popular opinion, it's not, um, what people like to hear, um, but this has been DR since 2003. Um, and again, I said this before, um, I, I, if you know what I do for a living, you can't really say I'm not being business friendly. Um, and when I work with entrepreneurs, the first thing I say to them when they're about to buy a property is, what's it zoned? And I'm not trying, I don't think anyone here is trying to punish the property owner or the business owner. Um, it's just that, like, I, I will literally say this forever, um, zone change is not about looking at the project, is this the highest and best use of this property? That is literally what zone changing is about. Um, zone changes do not guarantee the future use of a site. Um, I understand that we've done this in the past, I didn't like it in the past, I don't like it now, um, and maybe that's an unpopular opinion. I understand that Mr. Laflamme is nice, and that's fantastic that he takes care of his property and the neighbors around him, but like, that is literally, we are doing a zone change for a project and a person. And I understand that it benefits the whole neighborhood. What happens if he sells the property? What happens in the future? I, I understand that this is not, like, this is not a simple thing, and I've done a lot of research, I followed all of the hearings, it's not a black or white decision, so I understand why folks want to vote yes. That's, this is just why I'm gonna be voting against it, um, because that's not what zone changing is supposed to be about. And I also still don't understand, and I hope if this passes, um, I hope they will, you know, have to get a special permit after this, because then that can help us, you know, just make sure that it's not, um, the future use isn't, it's gonna be the same person. Like, I just think we need to think, we need a tax, to expand the tax base, I get that, but like, we don't have to throw zoning out every time we want to expand the tax base. So that's all I'm saying. Thank you.
Counselor Jordan?
Yep. Uh, thank you, Mr. President. A couple of points. Uh, again, had the opportunity to attend all the hearings, and obviously, as, uh, I serve on the ordinance committee. So in looking at this, obviously, I'm very familiar with the property at 41 Temple Street. It has effectively been, at least as far back as I believe we could with King's Trucking, go back to the 1950s, been this exact same use, okay? So that predates the zoning of the 70s, predates DR of 2003. Thank you, by the way, for that date, I was trying to get my fingers on that date. Um, and I'm glad somebody re, finally was able to get an answer to that. 2003 was when DR was put over the whole neighborhood effectively, um, not just this one parcel. And this has been used for this purpose for all this time. And this has been used for this purpose, for all this time. No one has an objection. When we listened at the hearing, it was stated, oh, well, we would have no problem as long as it's pre-existing, non-conforming use. Well, what that means is that they can do the exact same thing that the zone change would allow them to be doing. No difference. It's just one is allowed under the pre-existing rule versus the zone change rule. The gentleman went for a business certificate, he was denied a business certificate. This guy has followed every process hoop, as best as I can understand from the record, to make this right, and he has been turned away. He has been left no choice but to come to us to get a zone change, to be allowed to do on the property what's been being done on that property for 70 years. Neighbors, as Counselor McGivern correctly pointed out, everybody but one said, "This is great, this is good, please do this, allow this to happen." Da-da-da-da-da-da-da. So what's the alternative if we don't do this? Shut this guy down? I mean, that's justice? That's not justice. The just thing is to allow what has always been occurring there to continue to occur. We don't destroy people in these processes when we look at these applications and we totally lose our sanity here and lose common sense. We don't throw people, "Oh, wow, you know, under the technicality of da-da-da-da-da, oh, all of your investment and all these years you've been here, and you've been doing the same thing everybody before?" To hell with you. No, that's your problem. How many, whatever, hundreds of thousands of dollars you lose? Great. My God, I was sure as hell wouldn't want to be treated that way, you know? And I have as much respect for zoning as possible, but the fact of the matter is, this is the use that's always been there. And by the way, there's also IG on that street, about four parcels up, in the middle of all the quote-unquote DR, the holy and sacred DR, okay? That's right there. There's an industrial use, right there on the same street, up on Temple Street. So, there you have it. It's all really comes down to, and admittedly, it's not a cookie-cutter approach here, and the council's left with doing what we always should do, the right thing. And the right thing calls us based on the record, based on the history, based on the testimony, and based on the result. The council should vote in favor of granting this for this person, because otherwise, he goes right under the bus. Thank you.
Counselor Anderson Burgos.
I'll be quick. So, I was born, not born, sorry. I was raised on 30 James Street, which is literally one of the side streets there. And just a few parcels up, I used to sled on the hill that meets the train tracks. And I always saw it as a garage, like, as Counselor Jordan mentioned, it was since the 50s, right? And so, we didn't see, we didn't see any problem with it then. And I'm, so I'm kind of conflicted, because I don't want to deny this gentleman, you know, the ability to make money, because we all need to make money to survive, to sustain a family, right? So, and I completely understand that, but in the same breath, I'm thinking, well, what kind of business is going in it? And growing up there, I don't know what it's like now, but there were a lot of children that would sled with me. So, I don't know what, if there's a lot of children now, but what, my only concern is the EPA. Like, you know, there's issues with the kind of service. You're servicing trucks, so there's oil spills or anything like that. And I wouldn't, I'm not trying to say that this gentleman is not capable of handling an oil spill, but if there is, that, those are issues that I would have only, and concerns that I would have, that there are, there are probably children in that area. And again, it's, we say spot zoning. If you go down a little bit further, Temple, the old Springdale School turned into a hairdressing academy, Brahms Academy. And there was cars coming in and out, so if we're saying that residents have, came in favor, well, and I'm sorry that I wasn't able to join the meeting, I'd like to know where those residents reside. Are they actually in line on Temple Street? Or are they down, further down the street? So before I make my decision on how I'm gonna vote, I would like to know a little bit more about which residents and what addresses they have, if you guys have them available. Thank you so much.
Counselor Malala Velez.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I am voting no on this tonight. If it's, why am I voting no? If it's a spot zone, the reason, based on what I'm hearing, is in order for it to sort of, quote-unquote, pass as a spot zone or get past it, is if it's not benefits only one individual, or the public has spoken out in favor of it, and it benefits another community. The reality is, though, when the public came out and speak in favor of this, they didn't speak about if it becomes a BH zone, the economics, the, all of it. They, the reason why they were in favor of Mr. Laflamme changing to BH zone is because he plows their snow in the winter. That is literally what I kept hearing over and over again. There was no sort of business benefit to it, entrepreneur benefit. We talked about money, like, what sort of money is the community getting? It was around snow shoveling. Now, I understand that Mr. Laflamme also owns 39 Temple Street, so I don't know if the snow shoveling is gonna end if he doesn't get the BH zone 41, because there's still another property that he owns in that neighborhood as well. So, when it comes to this specifically, though, and I've said it from the beginning, you know, Pleasant, and when I said yes to the church on Pleasant, it was because it is a main road, and when I think of Business Highway, that is a highway that's passing right next to that property, it makes sense. This one, you're literally going off the main road to go onto this property. That's why it should not be a BH zone. As far as the pre-existing usage, the reason why I was on board for that is because if there was a next pre-existing, if there was no break between who Mr. Laflamme sells it to the next individual, it doesn't all of a sudden open up the BH zone. However, if the next individual wants to do a repair shop and keep it as exactly out what the use is at this moment, then okay, because this is our fault, this is a city's problem for not fixing this sooner. But if we turn it into a BH zone, it's gonna open up a lot of other possibilities that I do not agree with in that specific parcel. So that, for that reason, I'm gonna say no tonight.
Counselor Jenny Rivera.
So I would say the same thing Juan said. I know the area very well. My brother has his house there. He's been there 39 years on Temple Street, a few houses down from the property. Anthony Soto, not the superintendent, the other Anthony Soto has a house right there as well. There's also, so there's not a lot of houses in that specific area. One of the City Hall employees actually just purchased the house there a couple of years ago, I want to say. So I would like to see the names as well. If we could have the list of the names of the residents in that area. Thank you.
Counselor Bacon.
So, Mr. President, I'd like to answer the question relative to the public hearing and the people that came in. I don't have them all. I just took scribbled notes of who was there. William Kane from Temple Street, John LaFortune from the second floor, I assume of the condos, Doug Apartment 5, Ira McCruze, 35 Temple, And we know the one that spoke against was in a butter there. That's the detail I can give you, but they were people that were like, right from around 41 that we're talking about. So, they were from the neighborhood. The public hearing felt very much like the Franco Building public hearing. And so, we approved it for the benefit of one business, a marijuana business. So I feel like we're picking and choosing winners and losers here. We like the marijuana business, so we give them a spot zone. This guy is a known quantity, he's been there for 10 years. We just approved a spot zone for the guy in the church on the promise of doing something. This guy is a known quantity. He's been there for 10 years, we don't have to guess what he will do. We know what he's doing. So I would just say that there are similarities, but there are some differences, but we always listen to the neighborhood, usually. And I just don't understand why we would dismiss them for whatever their reason is at this point. They clearly know and understand what he's doing there, even though the emphasis that they made about him being a good neighbor related to snow, I mean, they understood that they were here relative to his business. Thank you. I hope that helps.
Hold on. Counselor Rivera, you had the question, she was answering it. Did you have a follow-up or anything else?
I don't, I don't recognize any of those names. I mean, I like, pretty much, because even Officer Denapoli's son lives, used to live next to my brother. My brother's also a retired cop, so I'm not familiar with any of those names.
Next is...
It's the name they gave. And I know Mr. Soto lives in Brimfield now, so he wouldn't have come in.
So Counselor Malala Velez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to make a point, like, many of us started in January of 2022, so whatever decisions were made before that time, we cannot say, or say this is what we would have voted or not voted. I think both Counselor Rivera and I have been sort of clear how we feel about the dispensary being changed, or spot changed for that specific corner. So I just want to put that, and say that. And as far as like, the comments, the comments, Mr. Laflamme can be a great neighbor, and I believe he would still be a great neighbor, because again, he still owns other property in that neighborhood. We're talking about this specific one parcel. Should we change it to BH? And I say no.
Counselor Anderson Burgos.
Yeah, so it sounded, from the comments that Counselor Bacon stated, so basically, it seems like a good chunk, or at least a fair share, of the people live in one complex, because there were doors like 34C or whatever, I'm not even realizing what numbers, but it just seemed like it was one building. Secondly, I take, I take quite offense to, and it's okay, I mean, you know, you're entitled to your opinion, but to state that, you know, I don't see why, first of all, comparing when we do a vote on one parcel for marijuana use, and then we compare it to this one. These are two different businesses. And secondly, A, I don't smoke marijuana, right? And I'm not a fan or whatever of marijuana, but I am a fair person. And so, to use these two comparisons as an, I would vote yes for marijuana, but not for this business, is, is kind of an insult. No, let me rephrase that, it's not kind of, it's an insult. It's an insult, and that's, when we were talking earlier about having a little bit of respect, you know, those little tiny jabs, they're just as disrespectful, right? It doesn't accomplish anything, it just, it just puts me in a position to say, "Oh, really, this is how it's gonna be?" So then, I just, I, I'm a little frustrated, so I'm just gonna take it back a little, and I'm probably gonna vote no. Yeah, thank you.
Mr. President? Hold on, hold on, hold on. We're not, we're not gonna, it's 10 o'clock, we're not going back and forth. I've already stated it, the decorum, and that's that. Next on the list is Counselor Rivera.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think for me, I just wanted to point out that, like, with regards to zoning, it could be great for residents in the moment, or residents that live in the community now, but 10 years from now, 15 years from now, 20 years from now, the community will evolve, and it will, it will change. And then, who's to say that the people that have lived there 20 years from now do not agree with what the zoning is that we're deciding on today? So for me, that's the perspective that I am using, that I am trying to like, go from, right? Where it's like, 20 years from now, will the people in that community still be in agreement with what's there? Right? And I'm gonna be honest with you, with the spot zone that was referenced a couple of years ago, people are not in agreement now as they were back then, and now they can't go back on it. So like, the idea is, is that like, it doesn't go down that way, right? We make decisions that are kind of like everlasting sometimes. And for us in the moment, it makes sense right now, but 20 years from now, it might not make sense to the people that actually reside in that, in that community. So for me, it makes more sense for them to take the special permit approach, so that way they can have that. I want him to have his business. I want him to reap the benefits of all that he's invested in the, in the community. But I want him to do it the right way, just like everyone else has had to do it. It's, to me, it's appalling that a lot of other people that have businesses, like, they have to go through certain processes to get what they need to do. And this guy's been managing his business for 10 years illegally, and nobody has done anything about it. There's no citations, there's nothing. So like, whether it's our fault, whether it's their fault, it needed to be fixed from the beginning. Now, he's in the process of fixing it, and it seems like he was advised in a way where it doesn't make sense, because if he would have went and came and applied for a special permit, it would, I would have totally voted for it all day. But where it's a BH, it's different, it's a different concept. Again, I am new, yes. I was voted in newly by all the elected, I was the second highest votes getter, right? I guess, what, if that makes sense, or if that has some value to it. The idea where it comes down to it is, people want to see new ideas, and people want new stuff. And to be honest, a lot of this zoning stuff, yes, it's new, but there is a purpose to it, there was a process to it, and it's kind of part of policy, right? We are here to adhere to policy and create more policy. This is part of it. Thank you.
One thing, and it'll be Counselor McGivern, Counselor Jordan, then Counselor Bacon. There is an application for a special permit back December 9th, 2021. And as Counselor Jordan said, and I agree based on knowing this case, this is the way he was told to do it. He's following what he's been asked to do. It's not like he, this is one of the things that does come up sometimes where you're telling the business owner or resident to follow a procedure, and they come to us and follow it to a T, because that's what they're told to do. And, and then, this occurs where it kind of makes him feel like they've done something wrong. I don't think this gentleman's done anything wrong. He's followed a procedure to get his business to where it needs to be. That's all he is trying to do, based on all the documents I have in front of me. I don't think certain counselors, when referencing other parcels, is trying to be disrespectful. It can come off that way, once again, decorum. I think they're just making references. So with that said, the gentleman is following what has been asked of him to do. I just want to make that clear. It's not like he's saying, "I'm going this angle to get away from what you want me to do." He has applied for it based on everything in front of me accordingly. He's doing what he's been asked to do. So this was special permit, December 9th, 2021. Hearing, open hearing continued, continued again. And then now it's off to this one. I don't have the date on it. But with that said, Counselor McGivern.
Another one 10 years ago. Hey, Mr. President. 19 years ago, this property was rezoned by the city without the owner being involved. And that's how this property became downtown residential.
There you go.
It was done to a lot of properties throughout the city. You're owning a piece of property, and you wake up one day, and it's been rezoned, and no one told you. No one told you, you know, from the planning department, no one told you from the city council, no one told you from the mayor. It's your investment. Think of it, everybody, just think of it. 19 years ago. Let's just change this. We always had a garage, you know, since the 50s. We always been used like that, we always built next to a junkyard. We all had a whole area down on Main Street, after that is all commercial. It's an investment by an individual, and that's why this city gets the reputation of not being business-friendly, because we don't recognize people who invest money. You don't need to know neighbors by name. We represent everybody that lives in that neighborhood. They spoke. Just like the people who wore one, where they spoke about the Franco Club, just like the people who spoke about the church on Hampton and Pleasant Street. There's homes closer to that church than Dunkin' Donuts. Unanimously, we created that zone change. If that church comes down, those two parcels, plus mountains, are big enough for a gas station, we won't even get a say about that. So why is this different?
Mike.
Good.
Music-
Can I start over, Mr. President?
Music to my ears, Joe McGivern. Music to my ears.
I'm, it's a double edged sword. I respect everything that's been said. I understand it. Vote the way you see fit, but that sword swings both ways. And this person's investment is in jeopardy. That's not the message to send to this community for trying to make it a stronger community for everybody who lives here, who works here, and who invest into this city. Let's send the right message to a person who has been doing this, to a property that's been used like this for decades. That's the way we got to do it to make it better. I'm sorry, but it's the way it is.
Counselor Jordan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Number of different points, I just want to, as I'm listening to the discussion, I just want people to be making sure they have all, a good command of all the facts here. One is, there isn't some other special permit that this person can apply for. That's the whole point. Tried that 10 years ago, perhaps. I'm, I'm actually learning a new thing. Maybe he tried again last year. Can't do that. Not allowed. He would do that. He would do whatever to make us happy so he could go on to have his business. He, this is, this is it. This is, this is broken arrow. This is the last line of defense, okay, to save his business. This is why he's here. Okay. So we cleared that point up. There isn't, oh, well, if you just do Plan A, B, and C, we're all, we're good. So that doesn't exist. Plan two. If somebody needs to go call these neighbors, we'll get you the official list. This isn't all people down at one house. Okay, rest assured. I listened very carefully in a whole room full of people. That'd be a hell of a big house, because they, they all had all kinds of addresses, all in that area. There wasn't anybody, oh, and I'm from, you know, Smiths Ferry here, by the way. You know, no, it was that neighborhood directly. And if we, because I, this is going to be a close vote, okay? So if we need to table this so people can get the addresses and feel comfortable about the who's who, I'd be fine with tabling it. Next point. It was more than just the snow plowing that was mentioned. The neighbor specifically mentioned, boy, that place had really fallen into disrepair, and he did a great job really fixing it up and making it look nice. That was a key point, okay? Besides, he's a good person and all that type of stuff. Number three. Another good point was mentioned here was about the use. When we grant Business Highway, if we were to grant that, that doesn't mean you don't have to follow the rules on sanitation or capture of grease or oils or any of those type of things. This just allows the use. Anybody that would have, that would be granted this, would have to follow all the same rules and regulations of any business, if that's even taking place, okay? But if it were, they have to follow that just like anybody else's. This does not give anybody permission not to do that. I want to make that point clear. So I think there was a number of good points here raised, but I think all of them have been addressed in terms of this is why this is here. And this gentleman, if we don't grant this, there isn't a Plan B. It's good night, I rain for this guy. And I don't know. I mean, I guess we're going to, the city's going to start some, some enforcement action to throw the guy out after it's been this for all these years. I don't know, maybe, I guess he's just forced to sell and hopefully it works out for him. I, I don't know. And then what, when you look at the building, can that, is that even in conformity to be a house? That question came up. No. So who, what value, if you can't do what he's doing and you can't have it as residential, now what? That, and who knows what that would open up, right? Because you're now relegating the neighbors to a big question mark. They know this guy. They like Laflambeau. That is unequivocal from the hearing. They want this. Now, if you kick him out, we don't even know what Plan B becomes. So I don't know if anybody's got a crystal ball that can guarantee that that's better, because I don't. Thank you, Mr. President.
Just want to correct my point, because I have my glass on. 2009 special permit, sorry. Let me put the glasses on, it makes it work. Counselor Murphy Ramboletti.
I don't understand how you like do a master plan in 2003 and no one knows what's happening with the master plan. And I mean, like, I just don't understand, but I'm over this. You know, we can table it or not. I'm just, I'm really over this. I'm over this whole thing. So, cool, great.
Anyone further? Counselor Bacon.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think all the pertinent points have been made. I would just urge my colleagues to support this. This person is a known quantity. It's been stated he has other properties in the neighborhood. He has an invested interest in keeping this one good as it has been. And we have the most knowledge of this particular use of any of the changes that, and in particular, the one that we just approved relative to the church. So I just hope we keep in mind that this is a person trying to make a living who's also been a long-term neighbor in the neighborhood, who the people that live there greatly support. So thank you for your consideration.
So motion was to receive, adopt, and grant the zone change from DR to BH?
Yes.
So Clerk Coleroy, if you vote yes, you're voting for the zone change.
Jordan.
Jordan, yes.
Maldonado Valles?
No.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Ramboletti?
No.
Puelo?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
No.
Jenny Rivera?
No.
Tolman?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
8As, 4NAs.
Motion to table for the purpose-
Motion to reconsider-
To reconsider purposes tabling.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
The motion is to table.
Motion to table.
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
All right. Joint Committee on School and City Council referred that the receiver and his team requested to explore the steps across the federal reimbursements associated with establishment of the Air Force Junior Reserve Officer Corps. Recommend it's been complied with. This motion is receive, adopt, that's been complied with. Counselor Anderson Burgos?
I am so sorry. I was stuck on the last vote. So first of all, there's a mistake. It's actually tabled.
It's tabled, okay.
It is, but I will give a little bit of background and what was discussed unless we can just talk about it once we pick it up again.
We'll pick it up. If it's tabled, it's in committee still.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But there's some information, I can reach out to the- You did, okay. Thank you.
So that was actually tabled, so we don't have that before us. Off to E. It says, Committee on Orders for an order that the mayor be given the authority to hire DPW director above the mid-range up to no more than the max. Recommend that the order be adopted amended to stipulate that these special circumances will expire when the next DPW director is hired. So motion is receive, adopt. Our discussion, Counselor Bacon.
Thank you, Mr. President. So the motion is to receive, adopt, and pass the first reading. This was to clarify the intent of the ordinance change that we passed at a previous meeting, because the intent was that the mayor would not need to come back to the council in order to award in this particular situation for this position in order to pay a salary above mid-grade. It's pretty straightforward. So I just explained-
Yep.
That it's just pretty straightforward. It was just to clarify that the mayor would not need to come back to council to exceed the mid-range on this range for this position until it's filled.
All right. So the motion is to receive, adopt, pass the first reading?
Correct.
Any more discussion? No? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading?
Motion is pass the second reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
And most, motion that the passage be ordained.
Motion that the passage be ordained. The clerk of Caleroy, if you vote yes, you're voting for the ordinance.
Jordan?
Yes.
Maldonado Valles? McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Ramboletti?
Yes.
Puelo?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Tolman?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley? 10As.
Your vote, you approve that one. Off to-
We could suspend the rules and take 39A, 39B as a package for discussion.
Take up A and B as package. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? A, order that 12,500 be transferred from Cannabis Impact to open to match for the Mass Trail Grant. 39B is that we accept the $50,000 for the Mass Trails Grant, which then has the 12,500 match. Motion is to receive, adopt, pass first reading. Our discussion, Counselor McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be quick, just to remind everybody that this was first came out of committee about a month and a half ago. And some legitimate concerns were raised that we did not have the answers for. And that's, this particular grant is about Main Street and traffic improvements. And there was some concern about taking parking away from parts of Main Street and some other things, one lane, one lanes on Route 5 further south of Main Street itself by Providence. We learned from Aaron Vega that the, this is not the case, that the $50,000 is going, that, you know, that plan is, is no longer on the table in those details, that this is actually going into the continued plan. It's still in its feasibility study phase itself. So we, we talk about, we, we do recommend again that we accept the $50,000, which is one vote. It does require a match. And Mr. Vega made an argument that the, the qualifying match could be used from the Cannabis Impact monies. And that's the 12,500. The committee agreed with them after listening to his reasons for using that money for, for the match itself.
Seeing no one, motion is pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion is pass the second reading. The clerk of Caleroy, if you vote yes, you're voting for A and B.
Jordan?
Yes.
Maldonado Valles?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Ramboletti?
Yes.
Puelo?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Tolman?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Your vote, you approve those two. 39C is Committee on Finance, who, the Fiscal Year 23 Best Practices Program, which is a $25,000 grant, no match. Motion is to receive, adopt, pass the first reading. Counselor McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be quick, but certainly happy to answer any questions. We had our new human resource personnel director, Kelly Curran, with us, the mayor with us. And we, we learned that this particular grant itself with no match is going to be used to do a deep dive analysis of health insurance, workman's comp, and, you know, employees' benefits themselves. Kelly was, was very instrumental in talking about the importance of this. I think we all recognize as, as, as workers, the importance of benefits. And certainly, the city has come a long way with the, with the benefits that we offer to our employees. And we've always been a little bit short, short on to stick with the health insurance and other benefits of this nature. So we recognize the grant as being put to good use and recommend that it be adopted and accepted.
Counselor Jordan.
Yeah, just to add to the chairman's excellent report, I would, just, just to be completely transparent, we're also studying the potential of us joining the state GIC. That will be considered as one of the options to save money as well. So they'll do comparisons of how do we make things better? Public, you know, current model? Is there things that if we did it ourselves, do better? Or could and should we join the GIC? And what would that look like? What would that, the pros and cons of that? And this money, the mayor, to his credit, was, worked hardly and quickly to, to get to secure. In fact, I was very impressed how quickly he was able to put this together to, to do this. So this is going to be a, a good examination of what we need to do. So I really commend the mayor for this. And Kelly, who's doing a great job as well.
Counselor Toddman.
Yeah, I just want to thank Kelly Curran for putting this together and the mayor working on this best practices program. It's really definitely going to be a benefit to the city and to the employees, especially the, evaluate a lot of the workman's comp cases and seeing why this is happening. Is there a way that we can get around this? And really look into the, the health insurance. How can we save the employees' money? How can we get a better bang out of our buck for the insurance cost of our city and the employees? So it's a, it's a great grant for the, for the city.
Motion is pass first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Is pass the second reading. Clerk of Caleroy, if you vote yes, you're voting for the grant.
Jordan?
Yes.
Maldonado Valles?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Ramboletti?
Yes.
Puelo?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Tolman?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Your vote, you approve that one. 39D, Committee on Finance. This is the Best Practices Munis Employee Self-Service, $29,475 grant, no match. Motion is to receive, adopt, and pass the first reading.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, Kelly Curran and mayor was with us. We alluded to this a little bit before when we talked about the mayor's veto. And this is a grant that would put us in good position to finally adopt some munis software, hardware, hard software programs that would put our payroll system into the, into the millennium. And by that, I mean, we would finally be able to allow employees to track their individual time, department heads to track the individual, the time of the employees that they supervise, and would just put us into an era where everybody would know vacation time, sick time, off time, off duty time, injured on duty time, things that we don't have at our fingertips in the way we should. It makes sense. There's no match to the grant. It makes sense. The finance committee recommends that we allow the department to accept the grant and put it to good use.
So motion is receive, pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion is pass the second reading. Clerk of Caleroy, if you vote yes, you're voting for that grant.
Jordan?
Yes.
Maldonado Valles?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Ramboletti?
Yes.
Puelo?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.[1652.58]
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Tolman?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Your vote, you approve that one. Thirty-nine E, Command of Finance, accept the LSTA, the Library Services and Technology Act grant for ten thousand dollars. Motion is receive, adopt, pass first reading. Counselor McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. We're going to miss Maria Pagan when she retires. And it's incredible that she's been around as long as she has. But she's asking permission from the city to accept the grant from the Mass Libraries, the Board of Library Commission itself. And this is a grant that she went after, after being recommended by, I believe, with some of her board members and some parents. And it's a grant that can, the scope of a project would be to work with young parents, young children about reading and about learning how to do things in terms of teaching their kids and teaching what, you know, what they, what they need, you know, that comes through like the services that a library does provide. There's no match to this grant. Makes a lot of sense to allow the library to accept it and to use it in such a good, good proposal.
Counselor Toddman?
Yeah, just really briefly, Marie talked about working with other agencies, you know, with this grant and how it's going to help the health and education of our children and empowering parents. And she also spoke about the MCAS. Sometimes when they have the MCAS, you know, a couple of months before, they're talking about training for the kids for the MCAS during the year, like a monthly MCAS training module. So I think that's very helpful for the students in our community. And hopefully, you know, this will really enhance the students and enhance the parents that really get involved in the education of their kids.
Motion is pass first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Is pass the second reading. Clerk of call Royce vote yes. You're voting for the ten thousand dollars.
Jordane?
Yes.
Maldonado Valesk?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbalati?
Yes.
Puelo?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Tolman?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Your vote, you approve that one. Thirty-nine F, Command of Finance, one thousand dollars from nurses to overtime. Motion is receive, adopt, pass first reading. Counselor McGivern.
Thanks, Mr. President. Our board health director, Shanken's office, was before us. He was actually pulling double duty. He was next door in the committee on trying to figure out trash and other services that the city provides. What he's asking to do is live within his budget. There's a surplus in substitute nurses because it wasn't used the way it was projected to be needed. The overtime is a need, another, of all the departments and every department in the city, and I think everybody's been affected by COVID in some way. But the health department demands, demands on the health department were noticeable, especially in the beginning of the COVID pandemic itself. And he's just asking to transfer the surplus into overtime to pay some overtime hours for people in his office.
Motion is pass first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion is pass the second reading. Clerk of call Royce vote yes. You're voting for the transfer.
Jordane?
Yes.
Maldonado Valesk?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbalati?
Yes.
Puelo?
Yes.
Israel Rivera? Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Tolman?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Tenyes.
Your vote, you approve that one. Thirty-nine G, Command of Finance-
Make a recommendation that this go back to finance with the, and the chairman alluded to this earlier. There's also two other related items later on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Take these all as a package and send them back to finance so we can have that. Oh, yes, it's item seventy and seventy-one. With thirty-nine G. Then we'll take them up at the next finance.
Just one point on seventy, I did talk with the department head today. He understands seventy-one and has no problem with that going back.
Okay.
It was more of seventy. They have advertised, and it's over a month now, if they'll have the funding.
And we did discuss seventy. If the chairman's okay, I mean, I think we're all on board for seventy anyways, so I'll defer-
He understood that they're packaged thirty-nine G.
Right.
And I explained that you can't separate them out. They have to come differently. And that's how it did come in on seventy. And he was, he requested if we could really take this up tonight and approve that, that would allow him to then hire.
That's fine with me. If that's fine with the chairman.
I'm, I'm fine.
Okay.
I can do it. I think we can do it quickly too, but we'll certainly-
So I'll, can I amend my motion to then just do the one committee report in seventy-one and do that to finance? And then we suspend the rules to take up seventy?
Okay, so take up thirty-nine G in seventy-one as a package. Do it that way.
Define.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Refer those to finance.
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
And suspend the rules to take up seventy now for a vote.
Suspend the rules, take up seventy out of order. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Seventy is fifty-five thousand from pay local building inspector to pay zoning officer, which would be a new position, fifty-five thousand. Motion may receive, adopt, pass the first reading. Counselor McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I thank the vice chair. This, the department head is Damian Cody. I think we all know that. And anybody that listened in or caught part of the discussion or anything that Damian has, Damian has been telling us over the last, last year or two, there's a big challenge in the building department going on with the filling of, of the, the important positions of inspectors and especially when you're looking at plumbing, electrical, and people that are just in general doing the work of the codes department itself. Damian, Mr. Cody came up with a, with a plan that the finance committee bought into. It's the collective bargaining unit did, and that was one of the MOAs that we received this evening, did propose to create and redesign or re-describe this position and make a position known as the zoning code enforcement officer itself. The dollars make sense. I know Counselor Jordane, we asked for the grade and we asked for, you know, where the starting was, and everything seems to fall in place comparable to other communities and something that just makes sense. Mr. Cody, I think the biggest argument is he feels when it, when it comes to advertising and to finding someone to fill this position, this is the position that he'll be able to fill a lot quicker than an electrical or plumbing inspector and so on. Plus, this person will be much more flexible in terms of what he can assign duties to in terms of enforcement out in the community. And he's just asking the board to go along with the MOA by adopting this appropriation transfer.
Anyone further? So motion is to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion is pass the second reading. Clerk of call Royce vote yes. You're voting for the transfer.
Jordane?
Yes.
Maldonado Valesk?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbalati?
Yes.
Puelo?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Tolman?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Your vote, you approve that one. Thirty-nine H, Command of Finance, pursuant to a January fourth, twenty twenty-two order, which is unanimously approved by the city council, H G N E, appear before the finance committee to get an update on their progress with regards to the gas electric, gas moratorium. Recommend it's been complied with. Counselor McGivern.
The committee recommends that we adopt the committee report. This is a good news. Counselor Jordane was the sponsor of the order, but this is a good news, I think, for all the residents and all the people of Hoyoc about the gas and electric. What they, essentially what they figured out, and I'd like to turn it over to, to the vice chair to, to discuss the, the importance of the, of their work in the gas and electric on this particular subject. We know the moratorium is hurting business. We know it's hurting homeowners and people who want to build homes and people who want to transition from oil to, to natural gas. And we know the issue of green community and all the good things we do as a, as a green community. Essentially, what, what they're proposing or what they're telling us, what they found out they're doing is out on Mueller, Mueller Road, there is some tanks of storage of natural gas. They already have a permitted and permission to add an additional tank out there that will look at the, the capacity is like two hundred and twenty thousand, but the capacity is like a thirty percent increase in what we have in storage right now. It will help alleviate some of this moratorium and help alleviate some of the, the no's to people who are proposing to either build new or to to, you know, transition into natural gas itself. I know there's a lot more to it, but it's good news. And if I could, I would ask to allow Counselor Jordane to speak on the rest of it.
No.
Please?
Yeah, no, I thought the chairman did a fantastic job as always. And I would just add very briefly, you know, kudos to everybody in the room. The council unanimously supported as well as, and you saw it here earlier, Mayor Garcia sent a letter of support for us to develop a solution to the gas moratorium problem, right? People asked us to come up with a solution. And that's what the council adopted earlier. Well, the G and E took the, really the bull by the horns and came up with a great solution to expand the LNG capacity, liquid natural gas, so that we, if we get this thirty percent increase, they can lift the gas moratorium. So probably going to take a year to two to get the final state approval that they have to get as part of the process, and then to get the actual tank constructed and all of that. But the good news that we can all report back to our constituents is mission accomplished. We have a solution to the gas moratorium, which was really a top priority. I'm sure you heard it from people around town, as certainly did I. And it feels really good that we brought everybody together to accomplish this objective. And thank you to the G and E for being extremely proactive. I appreciate the commission, Jim Lavelle. He, he needs no introduction. He's unbelievable. His team, they really got to work on this and came to a great result. And that's going to benefit our economic development, our projection as a community, our ability to build homes, ability to provide good service, and meanwhile, continue to support our green initiatives that we want to do to build up additional capacity there. Like, for example, we're taking Dean Vocational off as a natural gas and doing a heat pump there to reduce the demand. And where we can continue to have renewable energy, we need to continue to support that. But this community and the eleven thousand homes that heat with natural gas in this community need to know that that natural gas will be available to them for the future. So, thank you.
Counselor Bacon?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to compliment H G and E because they came out toward five where this fifth tank will be located. Unfortunately, there was room in the original design for it. And they did very thorough outreach to the abutters and the people that will have the most concerns about a new and big tank going into the area. I also want to compliment our mayor. And I will say that it is my opinion that this could have happened long before if we had a mayor that was open to the use of natural gas. And now that we do have a mayor who will support it, our H G and E has the leash taken off of them so that they can now provide what we need to serve our community. And so I thank both of them.
Anyone further? Counselor Toddman?
Want to say something?
Yeah, I recently visited, oh, what street is that? Now I forgot.
Yularo.
Yularo, thank you. I recently visited and I was very impressed. I also found out that propane is actually more dense than gas. So it's actually better for us to go gas than propane. And there's a lot of homes that are switching to propane because oil, first of all, oil is just not good for the environment whatsoever. So a lot of families have switched to propane and that's actually not any better than, you know, it's not better than gas. Gas is actually the better option. And I'm for this. I'm actually voting. So, voting for yes on this. Thank you.
Counselor Toddman?
Yeah, just briefly, it was a great meeting and having Mr. Lavelle and Katie in here explaining everything. And thanks, Kevin, for putting this forward. It's it's important that we have a little bit of excess, you know, gas there. And it's not going to cure the problems of not having enough. But there are some people that actually have oil that have wanted to change to gas. And of course, they can't because of the moratorium. And even opens up to some businesses possibly that want to come in. And I think we have one up here on Northampton Street that they old lynch school that every, they thought they were going to get gas and they're not getting gas. And that might be one of the problems that they're not, you know, getting anybody in there right now. There's, there's a building standing there with two storefronts. And I don't know if anybody's asking you, but everywhere I go, people ask me, what's going in there? What's going? There's no secret. We, we don't know. So I, I've asked Coal Vest, actually I called them. And we don't know yet, but hopefully something will be in there soon. And tomorrow, Mr. President, I believe tomorrow, having a municipally owned gas company, I think tomorrow's the date they're having a four to six at Veterans Park. I don't know if that was announced with the electric cars from Gary Rome, you know, the Hyundai dealership and Marcon. And plus, they'll have the police, fire department, everybody there. So the, the community get down to that. That's, it's usually a great event. I went last year and it was, it was really a well, well-attended event. And I think anybody that can get down there tomorrow at Veterans Park between four and six, it'll, it'll be a great time.
Counselor here?
I guess I would add to, to giving compliments to all the gas and electric for finding out a way, another way to be able to bring gas to the community or at least support the community for the needs that they have. I have a friend of mine who owns a business here on High Street, City Sports specifically. And they had to buy propane tanks and set it up so that they could open their kitchen up. Now that they're hearing about the gas thing, they're like, oh, my God, after I've invested so much money in propane, now we can do this. It's, it's so, but at the end of the day, they've, the ship has sailed for them. But it's good for the new people that are moving in. It's an awesome thing. And I'm, I'm glad that they found another way to do it because I remember a couple of years ago, it sounded like the only way to do it was by digging and creating a larger pipe within the pipes that transport the gas. But it seems like years ago, they, they developed a system where they could have five tankers, but they couldn't afford to have five tanks at the time. And now that they're in a better place, they can actually add the next tank. So it's pretty ingenious and it's pretty cool that they went back and did some research and realized that they have the capacity to actually build something and get it done in a way that's beneficial to the community overall. The people are happy and nobody's complaining right now. That's an awesome job. Kudos to them.
Counselor Maldonado Valesk?
Thank you, Mr. President. So I think I'm going to be, I don't say I'm against it, but just going back to January fourth, that first meeting, I, I thought that when we were recommending this, the finance committee, it's just, it was sort of like, just like any other recommendation, not necessarily that it was for getting rid of the gas moratorium. With that said, January fourth between now, things have a lot changed and a lot of different things have popped off. You know, for just an example, using propane and oil versus natural gas, it's worse for the environment. So if that's the alternative, then we should be looking at, quote unquote, cleaner alternatives or better, what's better for our environment. I think also in conversation with H G and E in the last couple of months, they are working towards being a hundred percent renewable. Right now, we're eighty percent. We're above and beyond like other communities. And we're doing the work in that direction. And I don't see this particular, how, how Jim was talking about this being sort of spending too much time in the wrong direction versus, you know, it's not building a new pipe, it's not doing any of that. So still on the, we should be working towards a hundred percent renewable, sustainable environment. But also realizing there are worse things happening now that can be mitigated, made better with this possibility. So.
So this has been, that's been complied with. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We're now off to public safety. Forty-eight, Command of Public Safety was referred, a communication from Counselor Maldonado Vales regarding nine eight eight numbers. Recommend that's been complied with. Counselor Rivera?
Um, give me one second. I was looking at the other orders. Okay, here we go. So this was an order filed by Counselor Vales. We filed, we ended up with complied with. I will allow for Counselor Maldonado Vales to explain the reasoning behind the order so that everyone can get a breakdown.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Rivera. So, Counselor Rivera, for this, it was just a communication to let fellow counselors and the community know about this nine eight eight number, which is the new number for the, or the shorter number for the National Suicide Hotline. I think a lot of the conversation we've been having here recently and talking about what is public safety beyond just policing? You know, having alternatives to having someone, an armed police officer show up to different situations has been, has been great for different communities. This one in particular, yeah, it's just an additional number, another, an alternate, alternate number for people to reach out to if they're going through a crisis, mental health crisis, or situations that don't necessarily, again, require an armed police officer to address. So that's really what I wanted to just do with this, just communicate that new number so that members of the community also know that nine eight eight is a thing that exists.
Counselor here?
Thank you, Counselor Maldonado Vales. I would like to entertain a motion to take forty B and C.
So for forty-eight, motion that's been complied with. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So motion is take up B and C as a package?
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? B is Command of Public Safety, that the police chief, fire chief have Baby Safe Haven signage. That's been complied with. C, that the Hoyoc Medical Center be invited to appear to discuss Baby Safe in law. Recommend that that's been complied with. Counselor Rivera?
So I believe both of these orders were jointly filed between Counselor Jordane and Counselor Bacon.
Yep.
I commend you guys on following these orders because these are awesome orders. But they are both complied with because I am in the, believe that both police and fire already have this in place.
Police do now.
Oh, police do now. And Hoyoc Medical Center has had it for a while, right?
Yes, they have. Yep.
So that's why I had to ask for both of them to be taken up as a package. But Kevin, Counselor Jordane and Counselor Bacon are able to take the floor and elaborate if they would like.
Counselor Jordane?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So on these two items here, basically, the law was passed in two thousand and four. The fire department had their signage. The hospital, as the chairman correctly points out, had their signage. Police, not so much. So they, but to their credit, they did a great job. If you go to the police station now, they have the Baby Safe Haven sign that's there. They've developed, they actually went the other level to develop a whole policy. They put in a new code for tracking this. They, they did mention
that it's kind of statistically, they want to track this going forward. Same with the fire department as well. Um to see if we get, and hopefully it won't be many. Um the police mentioned to me, they believed there was one in the last approximately ten years that it would was uh related to this. So um that's that's a good thing. And the good thing is since this law has occurred, alternatives to obviously the tragedy of somebody dumping a newborn somewhere, people know that and trying to get the word out that if you, for whatever reason, no questions asked, have a child that you do not want a newborn, by all means, please turn the baby over to the police, turn the baby over to the fire department or the hospital. And they would be happy to, uh no questions asked, uh to to um take care of that baby. And uh that's what it's all about. It's not about judging anybody or anything like that. It's about keeping the baby safe and finding the baby a new home. And and that's what it's all about. And so uh appreciate uh and then I'm not surprised in the least that our departments are right on top of it and this orders have been complied with. So thank you.
Counselor Vagan?
Yes, I would just say that I think it's a good thing to keep it out in the public information. And the fact that we have three sites, one of the three may be more comfortable for a person if they're in a desperate situation is just a good thing. And so I think that we're bringing the attention to it, that it is a resource in three places in our community is just a good emphasis. Thanks.
Counselor Rivera?
If I may, I just noticed right now, a Holyoke Medical Center is not the same as Holyoke Health Center. Would Holyoke Health Center be under the same requirement?
Um, I I don't, I, you know, I don't think so. I don't think they have this. I think it's the hospital and I don't believe Hoyok Health Center would be classified as a hospital. I believe they're classified as a clinic.
Okay, no, I just asked because
It's a good question.
They service a lot of people.
They do. They, by the way, and they're staffed by largely Hoyok Medical Center people. Yeah.
All right, then. Just that was just a question.
All right, so these have both been complied with. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Forty D, public safety, uh meet representatives from ROKA to discuss the benefits of the program. Um recommend that's been complied with. Counselor Rivera?
So I filed this order um more or less to bring in ROKA representatives and give them the chance to actually uh explain, elaborate, and in detail as to what it is they do, what population they serve, and what what the goals are for the youth in the community that they're servicing. Um for me, it makes a lot of sense um to have the program, especially with the way uh crime is kind of rising in Hoyok. Um and for me, it's trying to find prevention, right? And programs like these provide access for people that um that don't have access, especially uh a lot of kids, younger adults that are coming out of prison. It provides them the opportunity to uh get wraparound services, mental health on site. They get workforce development on site. They also get a a variety of different mental health programming. They use cog- cognitive behavioral theory. They call it CBT. Um the idea is to try to get the kids oriented um and acclimated back into community um and working. Um and for me, I feel like there's value, a lot of value in this program, especially for myself being an ex felon. Um it's uh we could necess- we could technically use, if we use the program in a way where it makes sense for us as a city, then we can fill the gaps in places where we have a lot of gaps. So for example, trash issues across the board, they've been helping out with with trash at a variety of the parks. Um maybe they have not been managed in a way where it's efficient for the city in the past. But I think that with the mayor and with some of their representatives working together, we can identify uh how best to utilize the crew that they have here in the community. Um for me, um we don't we don't have, how do I say it? When it comes to hiring here, right, um it's hard for us to hire people because um we don't necessarily pay what people want to make in in a sense, right? Uh they, if you're a truck driver and you do trash in the city, you're going to be making twenty one to twenty two dollars an hour starting possibly. You can go somewhere and make ninety grand easy as a truck driver. But to to me, in my opinion, there is two different uh workforces that we can tap into. One is youth, right? People that are graduating out of high school. Then there are those that are coming out of prison. Uh those that are motivated to want to work and to 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 uh provide for their family. And a twenty one to twenty two dollar an hour job for them is actually something that makes sense to them versus fifteen, sixteen, uh or whatever it is that they've been offered in the past. So for me, it's uh finding ways to be able to utilize this program to help us fill the gaps in the future um with regards to the issues that we have with trash um and um a lot of littering and stuff like that within the community. Uh thank you.
You want Counselor Vagan?
Fantastic order, a great conversation in the public safety committee meeting. We work with ROKA in the uh in the court system a lot. The judges uh really like to make that part of their uh condition sometimes, but more important, ROKA is down to earth. And you could hear that from the gentlemen that were before the committee. They uh they get it, what it means uh to be working with someone who is trying to do and and to uh correct maybe a mistake they made in their life, but trying to do the right thing. Plus, the resources they have are fantastic and the benefit, you know, everybody benefits when, as as Counselor Rivera said, when they uh they can pay some money to someone to help out to do uh some extra work in the city or some extra work somewhere where it's needed. Just a great program and a great conversation with the uh in the committee.
This is uh Counselor Tomlin?
I'll be brief. Thanks uh for bringing this this forward and having them in here. I was here probably about three, four years ago. They had a an opening down in ROKA, came into Hoyok on High Street. I'm they're still down there, but got to meet a lot of the supervisors, a lot of the people that were, you know, imprisoned and getting out and then really um trying to turn their life around, you know, getting education, getting social services, uh getting work, you know, getting back on their feet, which is which is really important. I think that's a a great program and and I and I can see uh uh Counselor Rivera, how you say how we can maybe utilize them a little bit more in the city and in the gaps that we have and and in the processes and in the workforce uh that can be helpful to not only them by transforming the their lives, but for the city by helping them out.
You want further? Seeing none, motion that's been complied with. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Forty E, public safety, uh order that the traffic flow on Kane in Vermont be evaluated to reduce congestion uh during pickup and drop off for the school. Uh recommended that's been complied with. Counselor Rivera?
So um if I, if I'm correct, uh so the first of all, uh Counselor Vagan had filed this uh with regards to residents um reaching out, or constituents reaching out to her with regards to like traffic and congestion around McMahon School. Um but I believe that we possibly tabled it, but it could be complied with to at the same time. Be- go ahead, Counselor Vagan.
Thank you.
And I I asked because I remember uh if it was Soto or someone from the school department said that they would ask the s- the bus system or the transport system if there's something they could do about that. So that's why I bring up that. But go ahead.
Counselor Vagan?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um so happily, what has happened in that situation is they changed their start time. So they're early start and early dismissal now. And so on the first day of school, I was at McMahon before going over to Donahue. And everybody came in very orderly. There was no jam up or of any sort. So then I went back a few days later at dismissal, thinking that's probably worse because everybody's lining up to get out at the same time. But I didn't see anybody parked in the no parking. I didn't see anything obstructed. And the traffic didn't even extend all the way back to Vermont, which had been an earlier complaint. So I don't know if it's just that the makeup of the school changed or that the change in hours is helping to alleviate that. But I have had no complaints since those hours changed. Um and I did notice that they're using mostly smaller buses. And so maybe between all of those things, um problem solved. So we'll take it.
All right, so it's
Thank you.
Been complied with. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? There's no public service, DG and R Charter and Rules, Joint Committee. Well, there was Joint Committee, but it was tabled, so on to motions, orders, and resolutions. Forty five from Counselor Malavales, Anderson Burgos and Givner, order that the superintendent provide feedback on the department is handling reports of teachers using the N word uh in front of students referred to the Joint Committee.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Forty six from Counselor Malavales, order that the city provide an update on any uh anti racism, diversity training already in place for employees. Uh that to personnel, public safety, and Joint Committee?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Forty seven was done, forty eight was done, forty nine from Counselor Malavales, order that the funds be created to implement a series of studies rotating between city departments each year to study the best practices and methods for implementing the improvements of the processes. She can say the city should consistently seeking to approve how uh public service and requires regularly looking into internal processes to charter and rules and copy to ordinance? Or how do you want to do that?
Sure.
So two charter rules and a copy to ordinance?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? From Counselor McGee, Counselor Anderson Burgos, order that DPW install a crosswalk area and signal at the one forty one and entrance to the reservoir. So that would be receive, adopt, send to DPW.
And public safety?
And copy to public safety. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Uh fifty one from Counselor McGee, uh explore creating a zone and code enforcement position for the building department. So that would be ordinance?
Ordinance.
All those in favor? All opposed? Fifty two, uh order that DPW patch the potholes along Lincoln Street. Motion be receive, adopt, send to DPW. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Fifty three, DPW place uh Lincoln Street on the resurfacing list uh to get done. Motion be to receive um and send to DPW.
Could I be added as a co-sponsor on this?
Sure. Adding Counselor Jordan?
Thank you.
Uh all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Fifty four from Counselor McGee, Counselor Tomlin, uh that the city adopt the attached resolution back from the rink that would go to public service. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Fifty five, um order that the DPW forestry trim the trees on Jefferson near three George Street. They review to see if the tree should be taken down. So receive, adopt, send to DPW. Or? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Fifty six, that the DPW forestry trim the branches along Hampton Knolls o- overhanging the street. Motion be receive, adopt, send to DPW Forestry.
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Fifty seven, that the DPW put in the temporary speed bumps on Hampton Knolls.
Receive, adopt, refer to DPW, get on the list.
Say, receive, adopt, send to DPW. And then Counselor Vagan, did you want the copy of that to go to ordinance now? Because in case they're gonna come down the pipeline for
Well, so my understanding of the process is if the neighbors want speed humps, they should be filing a petition. And then as part of evaluating the petition or once they go out and evaluate is when they put the temporary speed humps in to see if they actually have the desired effect.
I to get, we had a neighborhood meeting on this. It's the congestion from the buses and traffic coming down, going to Ian White. And one, clean up the trees. Two, whether or not they're speeding, they want to see if they actually like seeing how the speed humps would look as temporary. They they weren't a hundred percent yet on putting in speed humps. They just wanted to see
I guess, I guess it would perhaps get in the queue at DPW because I know now the ones that have gone through the process are waiting to have the temporary ones put in. So I m- maybe they would add it in the queue, but it's just usually part of evaluating a petition.
Yeah, they're not there yet.
The neighbors know they want it.
Yeah, they just want to see. They want to try it.
Well.
I guess that's
It might take them three years to get temporary ones.
All right, so motion be receive, adopt, and then we'll follow up if there's a permanent need. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Uh fifty eight, order that DPW repair the broken uh swings and equipment at all the parks. Um motion be receive, adopts, and the DPW and to public safety for a follow up?
And park and wreck maybe too?
Part- the problem is park and wreck doesn't fix it. It's DPW that does it. They have to send out the crews to fix it. It's park and wreck that evaluates.
Don't they tend to apply for the grants, though, that can get the new playground equipment? Because I'm sure the DPW is going to say, oh, we'd love to change all this, but you know, we don't have the money, blah, 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 or
Well, well
Counselor here?
What park is this again? I'm sorry?
He's saying all the parks. It's kind of ramping all over.
All the parks. Yeah, eh I would say to include parks and wrecks.
Okay.
Just so that they, because they might not have a grasp of what parks are messed up, but they have the they're probably one of the first people that get the complaint.
Right.
And then they give the complaint to DPW. So like if you're at the park and you see something broken, you're gonna call more than likely Parks and Wrecks than you would call DPW. If a swing is broken or anything like that. Um and they do apply for the grants. Um but that would be through CDBG if it falls under CDBG. But they can also do CPA depending on where it's at. So like some of the parks, like Jones Point and all of them can be focused with CPA dollars versus the ones in the lower words that qualify under CDBG could be focused into that. So it kind of makes sense, but I get where you're coming from, um, Mr. President, that they don't really have the say so over what gets done.
Right.
That's really DPW.
All right, so receive, adopt to DPW, park and wreck, and then to public safety so that we can get a report back. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Fifty nine, department uh departments be given authority to hire Schedule A positions above mid-range.
Ordinance?
Just ordinance. All those in favor? All opposed? Sixty, the city's list will be given authority to hire a paralegal uh above mid-range.
Ordinance?
Ordinance. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Sixty one, that the polling places uh for each of the voting precincts for the November eighth uh election uh are as followed. And then sixty, take or sixty two, take up as a package would be the election for November eighth is polls open at seven AM until eight PM. So motion would be to receive and adopt sixty one and sixty two.
Could I ask one question?
Sure, go ahead.
Um maybe it's to the clerk, is do we, will, do you think we'll ever get prospect heights back? I know we kind of because of COVID didn't, but do you ever think we'll get that back for one B? Okay, yeah. Maybe you can use your powers of persuasion, you know, yeah. Because uh a lot of the residents over there had said, gee, we really kind of liked it being versus coming to City Hall and and everything like that. So if we could ever pull that off maybe for next year, yeah, it's possible. Thank you.
Sixty one, sixty two, motion to receive, adopt.
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Make a motion to suspend the rolls, Mr. President, to take items sixty three, sixty eight, sixty nine, seventy one, seventy two, and seventy three as a package, refer to committee on finance.
Motion to suspend rules, take up sixty eight, sixty nine, seventy one, seventy two, and seventy three as a package. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Sixty three is the road safety program grant for thirty five thousand. Sixty nine is nine thousand seven hundred and five dollars from IT department. Uh so it's a transfer. Seventy one is
We already did that.
We did seventy.
Seven, no, we we sent seventy one to finance already.
Oh, yeah, so seventy one went to finance already.
Yeah.
We'll have two.
Seventy two is the uh Gateway City Partnership twenty thousand dollar grant. And seventy three is a hundred thousand dollar grant. So all those
You missed sixty eight.
Sixty eight.
Sixty eight, sixty is ten thousand from pay local inspector to other contracted services. So all those to finance.
Finance.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
We suspend the rules and take sixty four, sixty five, sixty six, and sixty seven as a package to
No, second. To suspend uh rules, take up sixty four to sixty seven as a package. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Sixty four is twenty three thousand six hundred and seventy eight dollars and thirty six cents. Uh this is the injured on duty. Sixty five is the same thing, and that's twenty one thousand five forty uh five forty six fifty three. Sixty six is eight hundred and forty three dollars sixty four cents, and sixty seven is one thousand nine hundred and eighty eight dollars and sixty two cents. So sixty six, sixty seven are fire. Sixty four and sixty five are police. For sixty four, it's nine people. For sixty five, it's eight. For sixty one, it's one. For sixty seven, it's two. Motion is to receive, adopt, pass at first reading. Counselor McGiver?
Thank you, Mr. President. Real quick, these, anybody listening for the first time, these are public safety officials, police, firemen, firefighters who were hurt on duty. Many of these individuals, it's temporary and they're they're actually already back to work. Um the reason there's so many for this particular evening is Many of these individuals, it's temporary and they're, they're actually already back to work. Um the reason there's so many for this particular evening is because we haven't had a regular full city council meeting with the exception of the special meeting uh since.
September first.
Long time. And uh August, right?
August, August, yeah.
And it just, it's just so some of these are just catching up with the uh with the accounting of these uh incidents that do happen.
Alright, so motion is passed first. Uh Council Jordane?
Yeah, I'm gonna vote in favor of this, but do they give the chairman or somebody a report that actually gives you, this is what happened and this is like, here's the names. This is why this person's still injured. They've been out on injury for five, uh, cause I'm, I'm hearing things. And again, you know, like so-and-so's been out for five years on quote-unquote injured on duty, you know, or so- some of these like long-term ones. And it's, the question is, how, how, you know, are you injured on duty for five years? Um, you know, is that like, should there be alternatives for, for a person that's in that type of situation? Um, wh- what's going on? Like, we don't really, I know we're working towards that, but in the meantime, while we're developing a process and doing a study on all of this, it would be helpful if they at least give the council some sort of background support versus just say, we need, you know, between these items, fifty thousand dollars in all of these things and just pass it cause we need it. I think they've gotten a little bit, we've been too good to them in that, you know, we just kinda routinely pass these, but it might be helpful if once or twice a year or quarterly, especially if there's new ones, that we get the backstory as to what happened with these. Cause you know, it's obviously a lot of money.
Oh, it's, it's, it's a good point. And we do bring the uh chiefs in and or, or sometimes more important, the um business uh manager and the uh payroll manager from, from the police department, you know, to talk about that more in general. You know, we have to be careful about personnel issues. Um regardless, and that is important, and we know that each of these are automatically um put into the, and I do this every time, the, not parac, what's the uh?
Metatrall?
Metatrall, thank you. One of these days, I wanna remember that on my own. They, they, they have to be screened by Metatrall. And the, the long-term are interesting though, because we don't always hear about those long-term ones where they do everything they can within their power to either bring them back into a different position, um different type of duty and, and, and to uh or encourage them to seek some type of disability retirement or if they're not able to come back.
Right.
Regardless on these particular transfers, this is just accounting, cause it's their salary. And if it stays in the salary line, they're still gonna get paid their salary. We just now know how much money is being paid in salary when someone's not able to perform the duty, even if it's legitimate. And they are, you know, we're gonna
Sure.
I think assume they're all legitimate injuries until proven different. So it's, it's, it's really, this is really more about accounting. That's why we, it sounds so routine, but it is important.
Right, I totally agree. I like the fact that they do this and they segregate it. So at least people can, you know, see how the beans are counted and put in each pot. But I, I guess my point is it would be helpful to have some of that level of detail for us, even if they have to take a name out or whatever, say Sergeant One and Sergeant Two. You know, this is, this is what happened. So we know like why this person continues to get this because, you know, this is now, although we're going from one pot to another, it is an officer we no longer get and we're paying, you're paying full salary, hundred percent salary for somebody that you're not getting a service from. So that is expensive. And um I know we know that, but uh I, I did wanna just point out some, beginning to get more of this type of information coming to the council on some sort of semi-regular basis, or if there's a new one, that would be kinda helpful or get maybe some sort of cadence of, of reporting, maybe quarterly or twice a year or something.
I'll be, I'll be happy to, to check. Sorry, Mr. President. I'll be happy to check with the uh, with the chiefs and see if they can do something.
Alright, thank you.
Counselor Rivera?
Uh, I just wanna thank uh Counselor Jordane for pointing that out um with regards to uh them getting voted, yes, almost on everything every time. Um but I think for me, the question I have has to do with uh how the paint, the payment structure is with regards to injured on duty versus a salary. Are they taxed the same? Cause I, 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 to my understanding, they're, they're not. Um, and that kinda makes a difference.
I think you're correct. I don't think they are taxed on that.
Right, so it's not technically a salary. It's not just the same as like just exchanging salary, cause on their salary, they're taxed and they gotta pay a tax. Whereas on the injured on duty, they get the full pay with no tax. And, and it's kinda like an incentive, to be honest, it sounds like, to be on injured on duty versus actually working, cause you don't have to pay a tax. So I guess for me is just trying to understand that process.
Can always ask the auditor to kinda.
Yeah. Alright.
And we can, and I'm sorry, but we will. And uh we haven't done it recently. Um again, they are screened. So it's not just, you can uh say, you know, you, you got hurt on a Saturday night and uh Monday morning, you're in there, you're be, you're being screened and you could, you better document whatever the injury is, not just with your supervisor, but with Metatrall itself. But we, we can, we can get everybody in and have a little general roundtable discussion and get all, get some answers to all good questions.
Alright, so motion is pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion is pass the second reading. Clerk, yes, you're voting for all the.
Jordane?
Yes.
Maldonado Valdez? McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
Yes.
Hoi Lo?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
No.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Council Maldonado Valdez, did you wanna vote? Okay.
Alright, so it.
He voted no or he didn't wanna vote?
I voted no.
Oh, okay. Just want, I just wanna be clear. Thank you, appreciate it.
Alright. So those who approve, seventy-four is from Council Murphy Rumbelletti that the council, in accordance with master of law, accept the proposal to sell the surplus property at two ninety-seven, three oh one, and three oh three Elm Street.
DGNR.
To DGNR?
Yes, please.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Seventy-five uh for Council Murphy Rumbelletti that the city council hereby uh petition the master of court to enact legislation establishing and appointing a treasurer uh for the city of Hoyok in the form of the city even below. So this would go to.
Charter and rules.
Charter and rules. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Seventy-six from Council Murphy Rumbelletti order that the city examine and study the Schedule A increases that were recommended by the salary committee uh study committee in two thousand fourteen. So. Ordinance?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Seventy-seven from Council Murphy Rumbelletti order that the committee on DGNR uh invite representatives from the Worcester Red Sox to learn more about the uh town takeover initiative of twenty twenty-three to DGNR.
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seventy-eight from Counselor Jenny Rivera that a handicap sign be placed at sixteen East Court.
Ordinance and disabilities.
Copy to disability. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Uh seventy-nine from Counselor Jenny Rivera that the handicap sign be placed in front of eight West Court.
Ordinance and disabilities.
And a copy to disability. All those in favor? All opposed?
Mr. President?
Yep.
Um before we move on to the next one, I filed a late file that actually cosens, coincides with that one. I don't know how the late file works.
Take it up with that one?
Wait till everything is, yeah, so I was gonna say.
Take it up with that one?
Yeah, with that one. So that way it goes the same. And then you can technically like put them together.
Motion is go out order to D. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.
Order that the city engineer and DPW explore uh converting Sammaset Street into a one-way. Is that the one you wanted?
Yes.
Okay, just wanna make sure. Uh bus lines for Kelly School be painted and at the uh parking for one side of the street. So this would go to.
DPW.
DPW. So go to city engineer and DPW. So it'd be, but it's.
Can we send the public safety?
So into a one-way. So would that be ordinance?
Right, I would say can we send the public safety first to have, to have the conversation and then I'll send it to them.
Cause I know they're looking to paint and stuff, but you wanna convert it into a one-way.
Yeah.
That's ordinance. So two ordinance.
Alright.
All those in favor?
Yep.
All those opposed? Back to eighty. Um, which would go at that, and this is to make it a one-way heading east to ordinance. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Eighty-one is Counselor Jenny Rivera, Council Malo Valdez, order that we install raised crosswalks or other uh commie measures on Main Street between Hamilton, Sergeant, and Cabbit and Spring. Uh so this would be, we want to go to public.
Public safety.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eighty-two from Council Vakin, Jordane, and McGivern. Uh amend ordinance, just include police and fire chiefs contracts. Our salaries are subject to appropriation to ordinance.
Yep.
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eighty.
Just a friendly amendment. We took care of fire, right?
Yeah.
But anyway.
Correct. Yeah, we put that, we put that provision in the fire chief ordinance.
Yeah, that's okay.
That's an ordinance.
Yeah.
Eighty-three from Council Vakin, order that the crosswalk at McNask will be painted and uh branches trimmed away uh as soon as possible. So receive, adopt, send to DPW or forestry?
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Eighty-four from Council Vakin, that the city engineer evaluate and determine the installation of a crosswalk, the crossing guard stand on the corner of Kane Road in nowhere uh circle. So this would be.
It, um, that would be refer to DPW to evaluate, and maybe that would go to public safety?
And then from there, see what is indicated? So to public safety with a copy to city engineer uh with a recommendation as to what to do. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Eighty-five from Council Vakin, no engine brake signs be placed on Lower Westfield Road near number seventy-two and on Route two oh two near Sunset.
Um, and yes, okay.
So receive and adopt, send to DPW for the signage?
Yes, I'm just hesitating because we have a general order that I recently found in the jacket relative to putting them at all the entryways of the city.
Mm-hmm.
But I can just pair them together. So yeah, that'll work. Thanks.
Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Eighty-six uh from Council Vakin that uh that the speed feedback trailer uh be placed at Eppermont Highway near one fifty-four and let drivers see their speed when traveling down the hill. So motion be receive, adopt, send to the police.
Yes.
All those in favor?
Do the numbers go that high?
Not according to the president.
Eighty-seven from Council Anderson Burgos, order a handicap sign be located at twenty-nine Belvedere be removed.
Can I?
That'd be ordinance.
Or, yeah, I was gonna ask, um, is it possible to have it adopted? I'm, I'm assuming maybe no, because we need to speak with, you know.
Well, now you still need the measurements to remove the sign and.
Okay.
Then update ordinance.
Yep, alright, so ordinance.
Yeah, ordinance.
Yep.
But Counselor.
If there, if there's a real need, you can ask the DPW to take it down.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, because I have an email that, that um the constituent actually requested it.
If you're, you know, you're confident, and we didn't say this out loud, but they'll, they'll take the sign down, you know, and then, but it has to be.
Updated in the ordinance, yeah.
Okay, yeah, that's fine. Okay. Um, but the next one, eighty-eight, adopted. Once you get to it, sorry.
Two eighty-eight. From Council Anderson Burgos that the DPW repaint three stop markers located at the intersection of Hillside and Claremont. So motion is receive, adopt, send to DPW?
Yep.
All those in favor?
Thank you, aye.
Mr. President?
Yep.
Just a point of information for the people that are asking for all this painting, there's um a contract that was bid and they're in the process of relooking at the pricing to see if they'll honor the pricing from August or if they have to go out for new pricing. Because there, I guess there's just not enough availability of staff to do it. And so they are investigating that to complete a lot of line painting.
Are you saying that it might take time before they get to it anyway?
Well, they're working on it right now.
Okay.
To hopefully get these things done. So I'm just letting you know by way of.
Just in case I ask. Yeah, thank you.
Thanks.
So eighty-nine is from Council Bartley, Council Givern, Council Jordane, Council Rivera. Does the mayor please uh fund the removal and rebuild the pad site for South Street PBT A bus shelter? Um estimated two thousand dollars. Motion be rece.
Receive, adopt, refer to the mayor?
Or receive, adopt, refer to mayor, Council McGivern, then Council Tomlin?
I mean, I have no problem with this, but I, I think it might be time that we adopt an ordinance for that bus stop because we've never put a bus stop out there. A bus stop is always inside the plaza and they just put it out there themselves. PBT A.
Counselor Tomlin?
Yeah, I think I'm supposed to be on that order. Um, if you could put my name on that.
Yep.
Also, I, I met with um our engineer and, and Council Bartley and the gentleman, I can't recall his name from PBT A, and we discussed this about a month ago. And it, every time I go up South Street, I'm thinking, is, is it gonna be gone today? Is it gonna be gone today? And those concrete, and, and they're talking about the PBT almost got all the materials, you know, the, the, that, the shelter and even the um, we tried to block it because somebody might have hit it from the parking lot. So what do you call those blocking, uh, concrete barriers or whatever behind it? So it doesn't, yeah. Yeah, and um so hopefully that'll, that'll get done. And, and I think uh the cost should be reasonable. I think they went out for a bid. I think um Chris said that they did put out a bid and there's two bids for the work. I'm not sure what the cost is, but I think the mayor would be on board too about funding the money to do this. So try to get it done before the, the snow hits and hopefully we can, you know, sometime uh November would be great.
That'd be nice, yeah.
Alright, so motion receive, adopt, send to the mayor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ninety from Council Bartley, Jordane, McGee, Tomlin, order that the engineer please recommend on-street parking improvements on the north side, South Street between eight uh four E-five South Street uh refer to public safety and the mayor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ninety-one from Council Bartley, Jordane, McGee, and Tomlin, that a proclamation be bestowed to Jericho for their fiftieth anniversary, which has already been done, but we'll get that updated. So that would be motion is to receive and adopt.
Yes, and uh our illustrious former colleague was very nice enough to be very proactive to already make the proclamation and uh we'll just check whatever date that uh on that, that they can coordinate to come in and we'd love to have them. Great organization.
So motion is receive and adopt. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ninety-two from Council Bartley, Council Vakin, uh requesting communication from the planning board and or law department uh documenting legal fees incurred by the city as a result of the actions of voting for Dunkin' Donuts and Log Cabin. So send that to the legal department.
Legal and auditor, please.
And the auditor. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Ninety-three from Council Givern uh with special support from our blind residents of Atticats, order that a light signal with crossing sounds be installed on the location at Stop and Shop on Hamilton Street and Clinton Ave. Motion be receive. Refer to public safety, copy to the engineer.
Mr. President, could I also be added on that order? I know uh Council Givern's not here, but if I could, um, we've been dealing with that crosswalk in that area. And I know that actually the person that's blind that goes to Stop and Shop, I see him there shopping um to get a signal there. There is a, a crosswalk and there's a clear sign, but to get the signal with a beeping, I think that would be important. I know it's costly, but I think it's important for that resident in that area.
Tough home. So to the engineer and public safety. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ninety-four from Council Givern, order that the zoning ordinance four four six uh be updated to align with the zoning in our neighborhood municipalities. Uh so two ordinance? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ninety-five from Council Givern, order that the crosswalk be repainted uh across Main Street and Hamilton. So that'd be receive, adopt, send to DPW. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nine. Can we refer that one? Cause it's similar to the order that I filed for top of the public safety?
Van a copy to public safety?
Thank you.
On ninety-five as well. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ninety-six, Council Givern, order that the signal, signals division in the fire department implement a light delay at Hampton and Linden Street to help avoid accidents. So receive, refer to public safety, and then to the fire department, their alarm division. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ninety-seven uh from Council Givern, Council Anderson Burgos, order to create a don't block the box uh s- area uh beach tree at CVS entrance. Motion be to receive. Do you have to send this to ordinance at all? Do you get that done?
Ordin-.
Um...
It's been a while since we've done it.
If there's no, if it's just repainting, no, but...
They're not in ordinance, the ones they did on Homestead.
So, is something?
I don't know.
To be able to charge the fine, you're gonna need the ordinance.
Right.
It's a state law, don't block, you know, don't block the intersection.
Right.
But don't block the box is kind of local, where we have a fine attached to it. The police department wants to see it in the ordinance.
All right.
Can I be added to that, Mr. President? Can I be added to that?
In ordinance?
Thank you.
So, two ordinance, because I'm almost, in order to enforce the fine, that's why. So, two ordinance?
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Ninety-eight, from Counselor Givner, order that the no-parking sign be removed on one side of the curb at O'Connor Ave. So, send this to public safety, with a copy to DPW? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Ninety-nine, we're getting there. Counselor Givner, order to install a citywide signage reflecting state law that requires cars to stop for pedestrians and crosswalks. To public safety, copy to DPW?
Could I be sent on to that, please?
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Hundred. Counselor Givner, Counselor Maldonado Velez, order that a no-parking sign be placed in front of five Whitney Ave at the Russell Residence, so?
Homestead?
So, no parking?
You have to be in ordinance.
I have to be in ordinance.
Create a no-parking zone.
So, two ordinance, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? One oh one, from Counselor Jordan, Counselor Bartley, Counselor Bacon, order that the city council adopt the resolution to strong support of the Hoyok Police Department. As counselors, we appreciate the difficult and often dangerous job that they serve the public and people on the property of Hoyok. We believe in a resolution to strong support, solidarity, and reflect the strong support, appreciation, and shared vast majority of our residents.
Receive and adopt?
Receive and adopt?
Could I be added on to that, please?
And Counselor Tomlin?
Question.
Counselor McGee? Uh, hold on a second?
No worries.
Counselor Rivera?
Is there a requirement, amendment to that, or no?
You could?
You can offer.
You can offer amendment?
I would like to offer an amendment to add teachers in as well, and add city hall employees?
No.
As well as mostly all first responders?
I'll wait till he's done.
All right. So, request was adding others, Counselor Jordan?
Yeah, I would prefer, Counselor, if you want to do one, I agree with your sentiment, though, city employees do a great job, teachers do a great job. This is specific to the Hoyok Police Department. To add on all these other people that are all meritorious, wonderful people would be to dilute the message that we're trying to send here, that we do as a group, or whoever votes for this, support the Hoyok Police Department. That's the intent of the order, but I'd be happy to co-sponsor another order with you at the next meeting, you want to do something for the teachers, or these other groups, but with respect to the Hoyok Police, this...
So, I guess for me, it was just like to give everyone the fair shake, but I guess that's not the case. That's fine, thank you.
What was that? So, before we get to that, just clarification on ninety-eight. Going back just a little bit. That one was from Counselor Givner, that the no-parking sign be removed. That would have to go to ordinance as well, because you're removing the sign?
I'm sorry, ninety-eight.
If it's in ordinance?
If it's in ordinance, you have to take it out, yeah.
If it's in ordinance, for...
So, why don't we send that to ordinance, just to make sure?
Yep.
All right, for ninety-eight, just make sure that we're sending it to ordinance, just to make sure.
Yep, so moved.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those in favor? Back to one oh one, sorry about that.
No problem.
Um...
So, we're at a resolution here.
Resolution for the police department, adding Counselor Tomlin, adding myself. Counselor McGivern? Adding Counselor McGivern?
Mm-hmm.
So, motion is to receive and adopt?
Receive and adopt.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, so one oh two, from Counselor Jordan, Counselor McGivern, order that the treasurer, Finn Financial, please appear before the finance committee to discuss how our stabilization fund is being invested, so that'd be finance?
Finance.
All those in favor?
Mr. President?
Oh, yep.
I think I should be, I'd like to, and if I wasn't, be on that order also.
Counselor Tomlin should be added.
Should be on, because I think we talked about that.
Finance, yeah. I apologize for that.
That's no problem.
That's my memory loss.
I'd like to be on that, too.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? To late files?
Six weeks, how can we have any late files?
There's only a couple. A is, is a communication from the court, Superior Court, with regards to the decision for preliminary injunction. Motion would be receive?
Mr. President?
Counselor Bacon?
Sorry. I have a point of order that I'd like to raise relative to this, and this is the only document I sort of have to use, because at the last meeting, we received the letter that had been sent from the city to the counselor. And so, my point of order is, how, when the city council had not received any legal advice relative to the situation of the seat, could any action have been taken on behalf of the council relative to this judgment?
I think that's what we're trying to get answered in executive session, and that's what we still have to get into.
Okay, so, I haven't heard anything about when we will be doing that, and...
I think we're trying to have one before this meeting, but then we're waiting for this, so the timing was off, so now we have to schedule it for the next meeting.
That's the, that's the plan, to have a meeting?
Well, yeah, that's...
Two weeks from tonight?
Well, whenever you guys want it, but it was normally, we try and have an executive session at six or six thirty, or usually six before a full city council meeting, to give that timing.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate that, because we want to know what the right forum is to discuss what Judge Callen had to say.
Correct, and that's, I think that was the way that they were looking to do it.
Oh, good.
So, this is, so send this to, just receive?
Well, I guess we'll just table it, then, and wait till the, receive and table, right? Or receive it, I guess?
I think just receive it?
Because I was gonna say, send it to finance or some committee, but if we're gonna have a committee of the whole as an executive session?
Yeah.
Just receive, I guess?
So, receive.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? B is from Counselor McGivern, Counselor McGivern, who was just complaining.
All late file orders?
It's a financial request, two thousand five hundred, from R and M Office Equipment Two, software employee training?
Give me a finance, please.
The finance, all those in favor?
Aye.
C is from Counselor Rivera, order that the engineer, DPW, repaint and find a way to more visible signage at three thirty-four Elm Street. So, that would be receive and refer to the engineer and DPW?
Final action, suspend rules?
Yeah, motion would be suspended rules, take up final action on C. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? This would be motion would be receive, adopt, send to engineer and DPW. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? E is from Counselor Bacon, that we seek authority from the cannabis commission to